The time is now 9:03 a.m. Mr. President, you may call the meeting to order.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good morning, colleagues, staff, members of the public. It's just after 9:00 a.m. on October 21st, 2025. We're calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start with having the Clerk of the Board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Members of the public, the instructions to participate in today's meeting can be found on the published agenda. These instructions provide information on how to participate through written comments and how to participate via Zoom. Live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the Interpretation Globe and select the Spanish language. If you're using a smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, then select Spanish Language, and finally click Done. At this time, I will ask our interpreter Victor Hernandez to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Sheri. Buenos dias, miembros del público. Les queremos dejar saber que las instrucciones para participar en lo que es la reunión de hoy se pueden encontrar en el orden del día que ha sido publicado. Estas instrucciones dan información de cómo presentar comentarios tanto por escrito y por Zoom. También les queremos dejar saber que se les proporcionará interpretación en vivo de toda esta reunión en español. Para acceder estos servicios de traducción por vivo en Zoom, ya sea con una computadora o una computadora portátil, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono del globo terráqueo, es decir, un mundo que aparecerá al fondo de la pantalla y seleccione su idioma, español. Ahora, si usted está utilizando lo que es un teléfono inteligente, una tableta, busque el menú de tres puntos, seleccione Interpretación, luego seleccione el idioma español. Y por último, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es Done or Listo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Supervisor Spear?
Here.
Supervisor Corzo?
Here.
Supervisor Mueller?
Supervisor Gochet?
Here.
President Canepa?
Here.
All present.
Great. Now we're on to action to set the agenda, assuming there are no requested changes to the agenda. Can I get a motion to set the agenda?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet? President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item one is a presentation of resolutions honoring Senator Josh Becker, Senator Scott Wiener, Assemblymember Mark Berman, Assemblymember Diane Pappin, and Assemblymember Catherine Stefani for their legislative assistance with respect to the vehicle license fees owed to the county. This item is brought to us by County Executive Mike Calagie and myself. Mr. Calagie, we'd like to say a few words before we introduce this item.
Thank you, President Canepa, and members of the board. I've said this before, and I'll certainly reiterate it here. We have the best representatives in Sacramento of any county in the state. And I don't think the public fully understands what our representatives did for us and continue to do for us on the vehicle license fee front. This is a state takeaway that potentially will cost this county hundreds of millions of dollars and fundamentally change the way that we do business here and the people that we serve in San Mateo County. Our representatives have been fighting for years with the Governor's Office and the Department of Finance to ensure that we get what is rightfully ours. We are being treated unlike any other county in the state. And it's only because of their determination and their resiliency and their collective efforts that we have continued to receive the vehicle license fees. And this year, we took a little bit of a haircut, but we know that this budget item for the state was zeroed out. And our representatives had to fight to get us what we got. We are going to continue this fight, but without Senator Becker and Senator Wiener, Assemblymember Berman, and Assemblymember Pappin, and Assemblymember Stefani, we would have suffered catastrophic losses to this county that would have impacted every city, not only the county, but every city. I am just so appreciative of them and what they do day in and day out. And quite frankly, they don't get the recognition that they deserve. And Senator Wiener, being the Budget Chair, brought certainly the gravity of the situation directly to the Governor and was able to work with his colleagues to keep this in the budget. But they deserve all the praise in the world, board members, and I just am so glad they're finally getting some recognition here for what they have done and how they've fought for us up in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you so much, County Executive Calagie. You know, let me first just express our gratitude to the delegation for all the incredible work that they've done. In particular, Assemblymember Pappin, Assemblymember Berman, Senator Wiener, and Senator Becker, and Assemblymember Catherine Stefani. One of the most important issues within our county has been the issue of the vehicle license fee. For the past several years, the county has dealt with the same complicated VLF issue and has needed to fight for the money that is rightfully owed to us. However, it's because of our state delegation, who is at the forefront, spearheading efforts to obtain the VLF funding, that we are successful in our endeavors. Senator Wiener, as Chair of the Senate Budget Committee, along with our delegation members, have been fierce advocates in budget hearings and negotiations, successfully enabling the inclusion of this funding for our communities, which has oftentimes been excluded from the Governor's initial budget proposal. Additionally, as we know, this year's budgetary landscape was extra challenging. Although we did not receive the full amount this year, we, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, would like to express our sincere gratitude for your outstanding efforts in securing $76,572,000 of the $114,340,000 in vehicle license fee shortfall funds owed to San Mateo County and its 20 cities in the FY 2025-2026 state budget. Your steadfast leadership has ensured that San Mateo County and its cities maintain local revenue to deliver critical public services to our residents, including homeless shelter operations, housing subsidies, farmworker housing, climate change, and sea level rise initiatives, and wildfire prevention efforts, and more. This funding is critical for the well-being and advancement of our county residents. And we commend you and your staff for your effective advocacy on this issue. I don't know at this time. I'd like the board to see if there are any comments to our state delegation. I'll open it up. Supervisor Mueller.
I just want to say thank you. I know it was hard fought. It's great to see you here, Assemblymember Pappin. I know how hard you worked up there on it, so I express my gratitude.
Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank all of the members of our delegation in working so hard to extract what is duly owed to us, at least partly extract what is duly owed to us. But there's always one person that does the heavy lifting, and I believe it was Diane Pappin. So, Assemblywoman Pappin, thank you in particular for being aggressive and dogged, all of which are necessary characteristics if you're going to get anything done in Sacramento. So, thank you very much.
Supervisor Gochet?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your leadership. As I echo what my colleagues have said, the money that goes to Sacramento belongs to us. And it's money that we rely on, as we've heard from our staff as well. So, thank you for looking out for us. You're day in, day out, in Sacramento, thinking about our county, making sure that we're on the front line and that our issues are heard and being represented. So, I appreciate all of those who are there fighting for us daily.
Great. Are there any additional comments?
Thank you. I will add the gratitude to our legislators. And I also want to make sure that Senator Scott Wiener gets his kudos because I believe that, as Chair of the Budget Committee, he played a really, really big role in making sure we got as much as we did. I think that we were set to get less than that. And I also want to highlight how important it is for our cities. We have a bigger budget here in the county. Our cities do not have budgets that are nearly as big, and many of them would be impacted as well. And it's something that, as Mike said and President Canepa said, is unique for our counties. So, I think it's important that our residents be aware. And as we continue to advocate, we make sure to try to find a long-term permanent solution so that we're not in this fight every year and year after year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any elected officials, senators, assembly members who are online? And then we'll take you next, Assemblymember Pappin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually searching for their names now, and I don't see them identified. But if they could raise their hands in Zoom, that would be great.
Okay, we'll give them a little time. Assemblymember Pappin, thank you for joining us. Really means a lot.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. It's so nice to be with all of you. And hopefully, we'll have the rest of our delegation get online because, really, we did speak with one voice. And I think this is what happens when we speak with one voice.
One voice is very important.
One voice, especially when that voice is on time. Your timing is impeccable. I love it. I love it. Good morning, Assemblymember Berman. Nice to see you. And I think it goes without saying, when we have a Chair of the Budget Committee that represents part of the county, that is very helpful. So, to Senator Wiener, thank you for your help. Assemblymember Berman's roommate is the Budget Chair on the Assembly side. Assemblymember Gabriel, that helps as well. And we sit near each other on the floor, so there's a lot of tag teaming that happens a lot of the time. But it is important to speak with one voice. These are not insignificant dollars, and they mean a lot to our county, and they are worth fighting for. The fact that we didn't get all of them this year shows that the fight continues. And it is not okay that our county is treated differently than all of the other counties in the state, but for one. And this year, the VLF that had to be supplemented was actually $118 million. $114 million was designated to our county. And as you noted, we got two-thirds of that. Very happy to get two-thirds, but tens of millions were missing. And we should not be treated differently than every other county. And the fight continues. So, I'm just most grateful that we have a great delegation between Assemblymember Berman, Assemblymember Stefani, Senator Wiener, Senator Becker. We all were in the fight. And you're right, these dollars go to police, fire, parks, lots of folks along the cities who count on this money. And it is very important to the fiscal health of our county. We stand shoulder to shoulder as a delegation, and I couldn't think of better folk to be in the trenches with. So, we'll continue to fight the good fight, and thank you so much for honoring us. It is a delight to be with you.
Great job. Thank you, Assemblymember.
Yeah, thank you.
The woman, the Department of Finance is the one that has dug its heels in in terms of saying no. Can you give us some color about what their basis is and why they don't recognize that VLF goes to the counties, has historically? And it was just as a result of a decision in 2004 that the money that was supposed to come to the counties came to the schools for that purpose and was...
And I think Senator Wiener will speak to it very well, but as I understand it, their concept is, well, while everybody should get VLF backfill, it should come from a certain source. And because of the way that the formulas work, there is no money from that source to satisfy our vehicle license fee. And this year in particular, Senator Wiener was indicating that every time he'd go into negotiations with the Department of Finance, they would line item out and scratch out the VLF in its entirety. So, Senator Wiener, I see you're on the line. Let's have you describe for us your time in the trenches to get that line item back in the budget after each and every budget meeting. So, it is that they believe it should come from a certain source. And the way the formula works, there is no money in that source for our county. But nonetheless, a VLF backfill was part of the 2004 agreement. And so, that's why it comes out of the budget as opposed to a certain pot of money. So, we continue to fight the good fight. Let us see if there is ultimately a permanent solution and/or something that happens in litigation, which I know is being handled by our folks to the right. So, I'll turn it over to the rest of the delegation, but it's just wonderful to be with you. Assemblymember Berman, and I see we got Weiner, Senator Weiner...
Assemblymember, Assemblymember Berman, thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, President Canepa. Thanks to the honorable members of the Board of Supervisors for this recognition. And I really want to recognize Assemblymember Pappin. You know, this is, as you mentioned, this is a year-by-year fight. It's been a fight all nine years that I've been in the legislature. It was easier when we had big budget surpluses. We're not going to have those for a while, and so the fight's going to be harder. But the fight used to be led by Assemblymember Mullen on the Assembly side, and Assemblymember Pappin has stepped up and really just, you know, took the bull by the horns in terms of advocating for San Mateo County. And one of the biggest challenges that we have, one of the biggest challenges that we have in every conversation with our colleagues is they see San Mateo County, they see Silicon Valley, and they think that everyone's wealthy. And they think that our streets are paved with gold and that we have no problems. And so, what are you crying about? You know, stop crying every year about this VLF backfill. But we know with all the work that you do with the communities that we advocate for the most, that there are so many... You know, we have hundreds of thousands of constituents in San Mateo County that are struggling every day just to pay the bills. And the VLF funding and the backfill that goes to the county and flows through to the cities and goes to a lot of amazing organizations all across the county who are helping those constituents that are struggling the most every day just to pay rent, put food on the table, pay for healthcare. And so, that's why this is so important. That's why, unfortunately for Assemblymember Pappin and myself, this ends up being our top ask. You know, a lot of colleagues don't have to ask for something they should already be getting when they go talk to Budget Chairs to try to get funding for their districts. That's the position that we're in every year. We've been successful. You know, this year, we weren't as successful as we wanted to be, but I know you all are working on some things. And we'll keep on working every year to try to impress upon, whether it's, you know, the finance staff or our colleagues about why this is money that San Mateo County not only should be getting, but also really needs. And that's really the biggest point that we try to impress upon them every year. So, thank you for, you know, this recognition. Thank you for all the advocacy that the county does every year to, you know, give us, you know, help us to advocate for our mutual constituents, and we'll keep on fighting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember.
Yeah.
Do we, round of applause. I believe we have Senator Wiener here virtually. Are there any other senators or assembly members through the clerk?
Mr. President, I don't see any at this time.
But we do have Senator Wiener, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Josh is close, okay.
Senator Wiener, please proceed.
Great, thank you very much. I'm sorry not to be there in person, and I want to thank my colleagues, our delegation. This is now, I'm also in my ninth year, and it's an issue every year. Every single year, the Department of Finance zeroes this out, and we have to fight for it. Back the last two years have been particularly hard because of the deficit. We are fortunate to have a Budget Chair ourselves who represents part of the county and also members of the delegation who really prioritize it so that we have energy in both houses. And I share my colleagues' frustration that there should not be a fight every year. The county is, in my view, entitled to this money. But every year, in the Governor's budget, it gets zeroed out. And so, as an aside, you know, when folks are talking to people who are interested in being governor, it might be, you know, a good idea to ask them about this because it would be great to shift that dynamic so that it just gets baseline, that it's no longer an issue that we have to fight for every year. Last year, with a huge budget deficit, we were able to restore, reverse the entirety of the Governor's proposed cut. This year, it looked like we weren't going to get anything, and I became more and more pessimistic. And then we all sort of grew down very, very hard, and we're able to get two-thirds of it. So, you know, I've also expressed to the county my willingness to send a Budget Chair to convene, you know, meetings with the Department of Finance in the county to see if there's a resolution so we don't have to have this fight every year. And I think it's in the county's interest to resolve it. You know, I, like everyone, like all of us in elected office, we all have shelf lives. So, I won't be Budget Chair forever, and I don't know when the next time is that the county will have a representative who chairs the Budget Committee. And so, I think it's in everyone's interest to resolve this. I know the lawsuit's been filed, and that's what the courts are there for, to say what the law is. And I just hope we can get this resolved because it is not a fight we should have to have every year.
Great, thank you so much, Senator Wiener.
And Senator Becker has just...
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Senator.
Excellent. Well, thanks. I'm joining where I'm at tour with a number of Bay Area homeless service providers, touring a very interesting model, and it's a little loud because I'm in the living room right now. A really interesting model, so apologize for any background noise. But yeah, I'll just echo some of the things that I just heard Senator Wiener saying. I want to really thank him for his efforts. I mean, obviously, all of us were all in, but it was absolutely critical having him as Budget Chair this year to fight for the $75 million that we did get. And I think, you know, in the, working with the county, you know, my team doing a lot of our own research and now working with my colleagues, you know, we are very much a donor county to the state. Just as the state always talks about how we are a donor county to the country. We're a bunch of donor counties to the state. And this is money that we were promised. It's fortunate that folks, also like my colleague Christopher Cabaldin, who was at the time a staffer when this deal was made, and he vouches for us. But still, this was zeroed out. This money was not there, and we all fought for it. But having Senator Wiener was absolutely critical to get the money that we did need. But we absolutely have to try to find a long-term solution. And, you know, I'm committed, my team's committed, I know our colleagues are committed. So, we're looking forward to working with the county in the next couple of months for a dialogue with the current administration. And as Senator Wiener says, you know, for future administrations too. But hopefully, we can get this resolved because we know that this money is critical. This is a growing pot of money. This is money that was promised to the county, and we need to make sure it's there. So, look forward to continue to work with the board in a spirit of mutual advocacy, but certainly all in, especially for conversations next couple of months to see if we can get this resolved. There are some other counties that are starting to be affected, so as Bay Area Park is chair, certainly bringing those in as well. But San Mateo County is the most affected, and we need to make sure we get a long-term solution. But thank you for this honor, the recognition, and for the work that you all have done.
Great. Supervisor Corzo.
I just wanted to say thank you again to all of our legislators for the advocacy. And I wanted to respectfully request that if you're able to, please just stay on for a couple more minutes. I have something I'm going to share in my board member remarks that I think would be really important for you all to hear briefly. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Why don't we go to a public comment? Do we have any public comments, chambers and on Zoom?
Sure, Mr. President. I haven't received any speaker slips from chambers, so I'll take public comment now on Zoom. This is for item number one. We do have four hand raised at this time, so I'll start with Debbie W., followed by Martha Simmons. Debbie, please unmute and begin.
Hi, good morning, board. I do have a question. Is this item one off agenda, public comment, or am I in the right place?
Just for item one at this time.
No, we did not. No, that's a really good question.
Okay, that is item one.
Correct. So, we took the presentation for our legislators. So, the agenda has been reorganized from previous agendas in the past, but we'll be taking public comment and then honoring the life of thereafter. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, and I reclaim my time. If that would be possible, to reset that, I appreciate it.
Time is reclaimed.
Hi, I'm Debbie. I'm Debbie coming to you as one of the people, as seen in the California Constitution.
Yep.
And the Constitution is the law of the land, and it is our job to say what the law is. And in August of 2025, you were served with affidavits asking you to show in the California Constitution where you were given authority to remove a duly-elected sheriff. And those affidavits have not been answered.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to cut you off.
An unrepudited affidavit stands as proof in all courts of record.
Debbie W., if you could hold your comment, I feel, I believe you're speaking for a different item. We're on a different item at this time. We're on item number one. So, if you can just hold your comment until that item comes up, please. So, just members of the...
Just to be doubly clear, we're taking public comment only on item one at this time. Public comment for all other items on the agenda will be taken at a later point. Correct. Next speaker.
Great. So, now we'll go to Remy Tan, followed by Paul Boca Negra. Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me fine?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I think item one is the $75 million for transit. I understand that, so I'm hoping the county uses that money to improve the Caltrain service, get that more frequent. I know with the new electrification, that's been...
Sorry, actually, we're on a different item. This is a resolution honoring our state delegation for their work on the vehicle license fee. So, if you can, please hold your comment.
So, to those who are on...
Okay, if it's vehicle license fee, I do have a comment on that. You know, I think the... Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I believe the vehicle license fee is too high. I know my car has gotten older, and yet the license fee's gone up. And a lot of people, especially poorer people that are in areas that are underserved by transit or relying on their cars, so I think they need to do a kind of means-tested license fee. So, if you're wealthy and you pay more for the license fee than if you're lower or poor folks, working-class folks, I think that will go a long way. You know, some working-class folks end up having more expensive cars, like a work truck or something like that. They shouldn't be paying higher fees. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker for the resolutions honoring our state delegation. This is for Paul Boca Negra, followed by Q. Smith. Paul, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. President Canepa, Vice President Corso, and honorable supervisors, and County Executive Calagie and community. I want to take this opportunity to thank this awesome and committed delegation for fighting for San Mateo County. We hear so often how wealthy we are, but we never hear the work and the effort and the support we put into the state. And it is awesome to hear that this delegation remains committed to the community, to the cities, to the entire county. And I'm just very proud and honored to be friends with all of you and to be represented by all of you at our state Capitol. Thank you so much for the work you do, and God bless.
Thank you. We'll now go to our last speaker, Q. Smith. Please unmute and begin.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Thank you for the Board of Supervisors' time. I would like to just personally... I would like to just personally say to the honorees, I know that it is hard work. I really, really was surprised at Senator Thurman in regards to him mentioning it means so much to the families, the have-nots of San Mateo County, to have you guys fighting for us regardless of fees being high and we're struggling, but just to be acknowledged that there are some people still in our communities who are fighting for health care. Medi-Cal cuts are really affecting our families, but for you guys to remember that is so important. I'm in a place right now to win. You guys stood up and acknowledged the less fortunate publicly right now, today. People turned around and was like, who was that? What, what, what? So thank you for remembering us. God bless.
Thank you. No further comments, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. In closing, I want to thank our delegation for their extraordinary service to the county and state. I also want to recognize someone who does tremendous work, and I don't know if she's here with us, but Connie, I don't know if Connie is-- Let's give it up for Connie. Our legislative staff is really amazing, and how you're able to work with our legislators on a multitude of issues is greatly appreciated, Connie. Let me just say this, we look forward to continue to work with you, our Assembly members and senators, to ensure that San Mateo County achieves a fair compromise with the state through a more permanent solution on this issue. And so with that, do I have a motion on this item? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
What I'd like to do is, we're going to take a picture up here with the resolutions, and I'd like Connie and her staff, as well as the county executive, to be a part of the picture as well. Thank you.
If the, can I ask President Canepa if the electeds are still on Zoom, if we could try to put them up on the screen?
Yes, so if you are an elected official, Senator Weiner and others, we will put your face on the video.
Great suggestion.
She's getting all in the middle here. Connie. Trying to get these guys on the camera. So we can get--
We're not wrong.
Just a little bit. Perfect, actually, right there is perfect. Okay, look here, please, I can, one, two.
Like the Oscar.
One more, one, two, three. Okay. Yeah, that's what we're trying to--
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Weiner. We'll now move to honoring the life of in board member remarks. Do any supervisors have comments?
Yes.
Or things to share for honoring the life of or board member remarks? Supervisor Corso?
Thank you, and thank you for staying a couple moments longer. I just wanted to make sure that as a community, we are all aware, I think we were all aware of protests and the day of action that was over the weekend, but in recent news, you know, in the past day or two, I'm seeing headlines from The New York Times, SF Chronicle, et cetera, that reflect the president's claim that he has unquestioned power to deploy troops, and specifically speaking about San Francisco, and since San Francisco are our neighbors and we're within, we're right next door. I think that as leaders, we should be really mindful that this may happen very soon, very quickly, and so I'm hoping that we can all come together if that happens so that we can support our communities together. And I've been working closely with community organizations just to be kind of aware of, you know, how to best prepare. And so I'll just wrap up by saying that if the president makes good on his promises, it's going to be a really difficult time for our counties and our community. So just, I hope to get everyone's support and that we can come together around that if it does happen, so thank you. Oh, and then I do have a questioning, honoring the life of, honoring the life of as well. And let me see, here it is. I'd like to honor the life of Daniel Naroditsky. Daniel was a life, sorry, Daniel was a chess grandmaster who passed unexpectedly this past week at the age of 29, and he was resident of the city of San Mateo. And from the age of six, his love for chess was evident. He learned from his father and steadily continued to rise in the world of chess, and at the age of 18, he earned the title of grandmaster, a milestone that very few people achieve, and even fewer by that age. And he authored his first book on chess strategy at the age of 14, and went on to publish additional works. And beyond competition, Daniel was also a beloved educator and commentator, bringing the love of chess to many around the world. And so I'd like to honor his life and hope we can have a quick moment of silence for him. Thank you.
Great, Supervisor Gochet?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to, in honoring the life of Mr. Thurman Smith of East Palo Alto. Thurman Smith was born March 18, 1929, in Forest City, Arkansas. He was the fifth of nine children born to Knowledge Smith and Paraly Smith, who were sharecroppers. He worked on the farm until his parents, with his parents, until he moved to Memphis at 21, and he met and married Willie M. Jones, where they, on August 1, 1954, in their 71 years of marriage, they were blessed to have six children. In 1957, Thurman moved to California alone and then sent for his family to join him. Thurman lived in several cities once he moved to California. It was Redwood City, San Francisco, and East Palo Alto, where he lived from 1960 until his passing in October 2025. In the 60s, Thurman owned a wrecking yard on Bay Road in East Palo Alto and owned a gas station on Rillo Road in Menlo Park. Once he retired, he became very involved in the city of East Palo Alto, where he spent a lot of time volunteering with the city, with youth, and serving others. Mr. Smith was a quiet yet powerful force, generous in spirit and committed to helping others. He didn't seek the limelight, instead, he made his mark through humble acts of kindness and concern for communities, often voicing his thoughts on important issues. He believed in fairness, lending a hand where needed, and building connections across generations and neighbors. His legacy is felt in how he made others feel respected, valued, and seen. National Night Out in East Palo Alto will never be the same, as he and his family always made time that on Azalea Drive, there was a National Night Out, and those in the community got to know their neighbors. Today, we honor man who lived with purpose. Let us carry forth his example of being kind, present, and giving. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Gochet, are there any additional comments? Supervisor Spear?
Mr. President, thank you. I would like to join with you in honoring the life of Carol Zidich, who was someone I've known for over 40 years in Daly City and who is the wife of then-Treasurer Tony Zidich, who just passed away at the age of 91, having a good, long life.
Thank you so much. You know, Tony Zidich, for many of you who don't know, he was the treasurer of Daly City for literally 50, see Diane on her head, 50 years, but was really, Carol was just really, really amazing. When Westlake was built, they were the first homeowners of that house. So Carol was one of those people, she was actually, many people don't realize, but she was a nurse in San Francisco, and so very active, was involved in the Girl Scouts of America. She survived by her loving husband of 69 years, if you can imagine. Tony, her daughter Deborah, her cousin Jeff, and she was really a Daly City treasurer. She was an animal lover and enjoyed vacations to many U.S. and Canadian locales, but especially to Hawaii, her favorite spot. And so Carol was an exceptional person, and Tony, they're really nicknamed Mr. and Mrs. Daly City, and they will, she will be missed. Colleagues, I wanted to inform you this morning that I am working on a resolution, and eventually, an ordinance to ban the sale of filtered cigarettes in the unincorporated parts of San Mateo County, following actions by the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors that actually moved forward with an ordinance a couple weeks ago. I continue to work with Environmental Health, the Pacific Beach Coalition, and have engaged the Office of Sustainability to help us collect the data to justify such a ban. As many of you know, Supervisor Groom and I had worked on a flavored ban here in San Mateo County, which a lot of our cities have adopted. When we had moved forward with that piece of legislation, our extensive, extensive, extensive outreach to small businesses that sold these products, it literally took us about a year and a half to move forward with this legislation. My hope is to really engage with small businesses that could potentially be affected by this. And so what we do know is that cigarette butts are the most littered item in San Mateo County. It's a hazard to our children, animals, and waterways, and is an environmental justice and health equity issue that must be addressed. For clarity, this eventual ordinance will be separate from the tobacco retail permit ordinance both Supervisor Groom and I worked on, and that the county continues to bring cities along. And so I look forward to moving forward with our staff on this extensive, extensive ordinance. I can't guarantee that'll be done as soon as possible because the outreach to our small businesses and outreach to environmental groups will take a long time, but we're committed to working with staff to make a decision informed and data on making the most inclusive process. And so-- Yes?
If this is an ordinance just for the county areas, and so people who smoke filtered cigarettes would now have to smoke unfiltered cigarettes? I mean, there's a lot of questions I have about this, so as you contemplate it, I think it's important for us to recognize that we could be actually hurting those who do smoke even more by forcing them to use unfiltered cigarettes.
And so, you know, Supervisor Spear, I think that's a fair question. We'll continue to work with our staff to address those issues. We heard similar concerns when it came to flavored tobacco, but what we've known through ordinance such as this, and what's I think important, is you really need to bring stakeholders along, you just can't enforce policy. And so what we'll do is we'll work with the various stakeholders. I think our county health has done tremendous job in this space, and one of the things that I realize, and you know, I've heard this argument before about, well, if you ban an unincorporated area, that means you can do it in jurisdictions. This board has a history of working on very complex issues, such as the paper and plastic ban, which have been adopted by other cities, the tobacco retail license that Supervisor Groom and I have worked on. And so what we, our hope is, is that if we do move forward with an ordinance, is that we can use this as a model ordinance for other cities. So-- Yes?
So I realize this is a non-agendaized item, and I don't want to get too deep in the Brown Act, but because we are talking about a future agenda item, the only thing I'd ask that you would consider, because my office was looking at this as well, but we weren't looking at a total ban, because when we looked at it, we realized some cities won't adopt it. And what we were looking at was whether or not there was a fee that could be given to tobacco retailers for the sale of, that put on tobacco retailers for the sale of filtered cigarettes, that the county could then apply to cleaning up and providing monies to groups like the Pacifica Beach Coalition and others, who actually are spending a lot of time cleaning up our beaches and collecting these. So I would just ask if you would please consider in this work a two-pronged approach so that cities aren't left with doing, with only one option? Because I'm just not sure all cities would do it, or even that, I mean, our colleagues on the board, all of us have not voted on this either, and I think the fee-based approach might actually help us get money to organizations that are cleaning up these filters every day. So I would just offer that out to you as another option to put into the ordinance you propose.
No, that's excellent. I'd be delighted to, you know, offline talk to you about cosponsorship. I think that is an incredible, incredible idea. And so with that, can we move to public comment?
Sure, Mr. President, at this time, we'll take items that are on the consent agenda, which today begins at item 17 and includes the closed session matter at item 48, as well as any items that are not on the agenda that are county-related. We did receive public comment by email, which was submitted to the board and also put on the public site. And at this time, we do have speaker cards from chambers, and we also have hands raised in Zoom. I'll start with the cards from chambers. Sam Johnson, followed by Haley Crum. Sam Johnson?
Good morning to everyone on the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I'm looking at item 44, and hopefully I'm at the right position. It's the accepted funding of the Target Homeless Prevention Program from the Silicon Valley Foundation in the amount of $500,000. And I'm with Retrain in the Village, and we've been in operation of homelessness for 12 years without funding from the county. And we still maintain and support homelessness and transitional housing program. And we're trying to get funding from the county to continue to support Retrain in the Village, if at all possible. But it's been 12 years without funding, and we need funding of the county to address our issues that we have, and supporting the housing and keeping the housing open. Thank you. Excuse me.
Thank you. Haley Crum?
Hello. Hi, Haley Crum, Retrain the Village. It's been the support that we called out for on the 23rd. District Four, Lisa sent over two wonderful young ladies, Connie and Vanessa, to kind of help go through all of the books. We're government-funded, and of course, Mr. President, I shade us down. So it's one thing after another. I've never seen from this type of overflow. We have self-sustained for 13 years, so we just need a commitment that you guys will monetarily help us. I'll give you receipts for the bills. We accumulated them over the VA contract. $64.15 a day does not work, but like I said-- We accumulated them over the VA contract. $64.15 a day does not work. But like I said, I stand with integrity, and I'm grateful and thankful for whatever you can do. But we need to know which way to go with this. So we need to know if we can get funded or not. And then I'll, I'll have to put a loan on my house. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all the speaker cards I have from chambers. And now we'll go to people from Zoom. We'll start with Ann, followed by Martin Fox. Ann, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I am concerned that the county has approved $3.5 million to build Cypress Point in a town that has no health care. Seton Hospital remains closed, and even if a lawsuit requires the hospital to open its ER, that is only for two years, at which point it can close permanently. The urgent care has closed its doors permanently in Half Moon Bay. There is no money set aside to offer Moss Beach residents ongoing or future health care. Also, Cypress Point is now saying there will be four units of housing for homeless, with a minimum number of 12 adults to maximum 28 adults allowed based on number of bedrooms per law. What services are being offered for the homeless? How will this affect residents in the neighborhood? What monies will the county provide for services for Cypress Point and Moss Beach residents? The number of units, according to Mr. Hodges, is now 76, although 71 units were approved. People are being moved into Moss Beach for this housing from far away like Pescadero. There are no services available for the current residents or future residents. Please stop using Moss Beach residents. Meet arbitrary quote is dictated by a governor who cares more about running for president than taking care of Californians. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to make a final call for raised hands in Zoom, and the last speaker that I call will be the last hand that we take. Okay, last call has been made, and the last speaker will be Elsa Schaefer. Martin Fox, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, President Canepa, and my fellow veteran attorney, Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Spear, Corzo, Mueller, and Gautier, and County Executive Mr. Calagie. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families, and make the reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Lanham and Peter Short Act a top county state legislative priority. Today, the San Mateo Daily Journal's front page article entitled "San Bruno Extends Its Mental Health Clinician Program as Further Evidence," which proves San Mateo County's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services continues to use California's Lanham and Peter Short Act as an excuse to obstruct the delivery of effective mental health treatment system to those who are seriously ill, and that it prevents them from recognizing their need to seek treatment voluntarily. No thanks to the American Civil Liberties Union, Disability Rights California, and the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. Please make defunding the intellectual and make morally bankrupt law foundation of Silicon Valley, Disability Rights California, a top county federal legislative priority, the reintroduction and passage of the Lanham and Peter Short Act repeal, a top county state legislative priority, and the immediate implementation of improved Senate Bill 43, the highest county health department priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Fixon, San Mateo County, followed by Martha Simmons. Fixon, San Mateo, please unmute. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Goodban from Edward City, and I'm speaking on behalf of Fixon, San Mateo County. Many thanks to Supervisor Spear for your support for a permanent inspector general. I also want to respect and respond to the opposing viewpoint of the Deputy Sheriff's Association and the Organization of Sheriff Sergeants. We share the same goals for the sheriff's office to function smoothly, be adequately staffed and resourced, with good policies and procedures to provide the best in community and public safety. An inspector general is not punitive and should not be, should not be punitive. Instead, they look at complaints and incidents and policies with a neutral eye. It's a chance for independent review to build communication with the sheriff's organization and be able to identify and resolve problems before they become a crisis. And importantly, an inspector general cannot set policy or impose discipline. That authority is held by the sheriff. So it's doubly important to build some trust in order to work together to problem solve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Martha Simmons, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. My name is Martha Simmons. I'm a 30-year resident of Belmont and a non-practicing physician. I'm speaking today primarily as a master student in the Joint Program in Health Policy and Law at UC San Francisco and UC Law San Francisco. I'm working with two nurses and an aspiring physician on a policy project regarding healthcare workforce safety, and I'm here to speak publicly on that topic. Under the health section of today's consent agenda, I noticed item 30 is an extension of a security service contract. I'm presuming that is for San Mateo Medical Center. Healthcare workers are five times more likely to experience workplace violence than workers overall. This is of particular concern in our emergency departments. On top of serious physical injuries, the violence increases burnout and worsens the current nursing shortage. California's AB 977 went into effect in January, increasing penalties and requiring a public notice of penalties, but there's currently no federal law protecting healthcare workers from violence. There is a federal, say, the Health Force Workforce Act, which would provide new tools. Thank you to everyone in the room for your service to our county and for all our efforts to keep our healthcare workers safe.
Thank you, Martha. Next, we have Forensic Mama, followed by Remy Tan. Forensic Mama, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. As you all know, I was offered the firearm technical lead position in your crime lab several years ago. I love firearms evidence. What do the assassinations of Congressman Leo Ryan, Charlie Kirk, and President John Kennedy have in common? Answer: A bullshit public narrative with magic bullets that defy common sense and logic. Jackie Spear claims to have survived highly lethal rifle and shotgun wounds to her leg while miraculously surviving 22 hours in the jungle without bleeding out. Like Lyndon B. Johnson, who took President Kennedy's place, Jackie took her dead boss's job-
Next speaker, next speaker. Thank you.
-in her 75th year of life-
Thank you, next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Remy Tan, followed by Paul Boca Negra. Paul, please unmute, or sorry, Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Remy Tan, longtime, 30-year resident of San Mateo County, Pacifica architect, and wanted to comment on a couple of the mental health issues. The county needs to spend more money on mental health treatment. As, you know, a lot of the crimes in the county are caused by people with mental health issues. So that's a really important thing. And also, as far as healthcare coverage, I think the county needs to look at providing better dental coverage to the residents, especially the needy residents. Dental care infections, you know, affect medical health, so it's just as important. So the county honorable supervisors can look at those issues. That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Elsa Schaefer, your hand went down, so if you'd like it back, please do raise it at this time. Paul Boca Negra, please unmute and begin.
Good morning again, President Canepa, Vice President Corzo, and honorable Supervisors Gautier, Mueller, and Jackie Spear, as well as our County Executive and Community. I'm speaking on behalf of Fixon, San Mateo this morning, and we are requesting that this board appoint an interim sheriff rather than waiting for a special election. These are some of the reasons why. Number one, an appointment of our democratically elected representatives would be complete in less than three weeks. The alternative, the alternative is to leave the sheriff's role vacant and allow the duties of the sheriff to be performed by someone who was not elected by the people. Two, an appointment will allow the organization to move forward with new leadership and hopefully begin solving some of the issues that have plagued the sheriff's department up to now. And then three, as our elected representatives, you are our proxy, the community overwhelmingly supported Measure A. And we are hoping that you fulfill your responsibility to appoint a representative rather than allow this to drag on and go into an election and take more time-
Thank you, Mr. Boca Negra. Next speaker.
Mr. President, can I just note for the record that we have as item nine on the regular agenda discussion of these matters. So we want to request that people hold their comments on this until item nine.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elsa Schaefer was our last-called speaker, but she has not raised her hand back, and that was the end of public comment.
All right. Thank you so much. I want to thank those who shared this, their comments. We'll now take action to approve the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gautier?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent agenda passes.
We'll begin with the meeting with a series of presentations and awards. There are seven in total. The first item is item two, which is a commendation honoring Sandra Furpo as Employee of the Month for October. This is brought to us by our County Executive, Mr. Calagie.
Thank you, President Canepa and members of the board. This is always one of the best things I get to do, and that is to recognize our incredible employees. And we have so many employees who behind the scenes, every day, make a difference. And certainly Sandra Furpo is a representative of that class of individuals. She has been with the emergency management department since 2024, but she has made an incredible impact on the community in a relatively short period of time. In the past year, she had, has led 19 community events and trainings, engaged over 3,000 residents in emergency preparedness. And we know how important this is, because it's not if, it's when the next major emergency occurs in this county, and we need our residents prepared. And she is just amazing at doing that. She engages the public in bilingual outreach across the county, reaching thousands of people. There's a growing engagement reflected in nearly 5,000 new signups to SMC Alert since 2024. 5,000. And we want everybody to be on SMC Alert, because it's a great way to receive emergency information. And I know what Sandra's going to probably double that, maybe triple that next year, right, Sandra? And her care is just, is just amazing in the feedback that we get from the public. More recently, she's been engaged in the Be Wildfire Ready and Safe event, drawing over 400 participants and leaving a lasting impact. She was played a major part in Disaster Preparedness Day, and welcomed over 1,800 attendees to the workshop, which was in English, Spanish, and Mandarin. She's just high-energy, very warm and caring, and has done just an incredible, incredible job for the department. So we are so lucky to have Sandra as one of our employees, doing the work that she's doing, preparing the community for the next disaster. So thank you for this opportunity to introduce Sandra.
Thank you so much. Mr. Calagie, Ms. Furpo, would you like to say a couple words?
Can we have board comments, too?
Yep, we'll do them right after.
Good morning, President Canepa, Supervisors, County Executive, and my fellow county staff and residents of San Mateo County. In my capacity as a community outreach coordinator for the county emergency management, I have the privilege of working with each of you, your staffs on various projects, as well as with fellow county employees in our many departments, in addition to being out in our community. Because of that, I'm rather visible. But we all know that one person's success is based on the team that they work with. At emergency management, I work with a terrific team of skilled and talented people, of diverse life experience, which brings so much benefit to the residents of San Mateo County and to me personally. And that's the ultimate goal for us, helping San Mateo County residents prepare and become the most resilient in the country. I thank you for this honor, which I receive on behalf of my fellow county employees, and I thank you for the opportunity to continue building confidence and preparedness among all the people who live and work in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sandra, you know, you are a superstar. And I have known Sandra for probably close to 30 years, when she was the producer at KGO Radio, first in the newsroom and then on Ron Owen Show. So over many years, we've engaged. Always pleasant, upbeat. And then I had the good fortune of coming back to the county, and low and behold, here was Sandra, already on board, working on some really important issues. So I've seen upfront how you have engaged with the community, both in terms of your efforts with Fire Safe and Ready, and the town halls we've had, and how we have to have those packs ready at the side of our cars in order to take off when danger occurs. So you're, we're thrilled to have you and lucky to have you. And I know this was supposed to be awarded to you in August, and you had an unfortunate accident and suffered a brain injury. So I can't tell you how thrilling it is to see you here in the chamber today. Stay well. Come back slowly, and make sure that we have you for many years to come.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Supervisor Corzo?
Hi, Sandra. I'm so glad to see you up here. You are so deserving of this. I think, you know, the time we've interacted the most was at a Know Your Rights training, where you came and you gave a quick 10, 15-minute presentation on disaster prep. And just the fact that you were willing to do that pretty last minute, to be honest, was amazing. And the way that you interacted with our community members gave me so much, I don't know, it just made me all warm and fuzzy inside, because seeing you make sure that our most vulnerable community members have the same info that others are more easily able to access, just was a very clear example of your dedication. And it was, it was a pretty late night that night, but you came and you brought lots of goodies for people, and you stayed after, and you talked with people, and you made sure everything was given out. It just, it meant a lot to me and to the community. And I think it's a perfect, again, the perfect example of who you are as, as a leader in this community as well, and how much you're willing to give back. So thank you for that, and I'm really excited that you got this award. So congrats.
Supervisor Gautier?
Congratulations. It's such a well-deserved honor to be acknowledged. I've only been here since January, but in all the meetings that I've been in, you have been stellar in your presentations. They're clear and concise, and people walk away knowing what to do in case of, when a disaster happens, with a checklist and with resources to start that bag. I was at one meeting with you when you did multiple jobs. You were interpreting at the same time of doing the presentation and making sure that everybody in the room was okay. I know that you're supported by a team, but it is your leadership and your work that we're acknowledging today, because you do the work for all of us in making sure that this county will be prepared when the next disaster happens. So again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there any other board comments? Seeing none, can we go to public comment?
Sure, Mr. President. I haven't received any speaker cards in chambers, so at this time, I'd like to ask those on Zoom to raise your hand for item two, honoring our Employee of the Month, Sandra. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would someone like to make a motion to authorize the commendation?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gautier?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And we have, we have a special gift for you. We have a plaque, but I think we have something that you'll really enjoy. So let me bring that down to you. So let me bring that down to you. We'll now move to Item 3, which is the recognition of Wellness Leadership Award recipients. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corzo and originates from Human Resources. Supervisor Corzo, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, thank you. Good morning, everyone. If everyone's wondering why there's so many people here today, it's partly because we have 42 winners for this next award. These are our County Wellness Leader Awards. And again, 42 leaders in our county this time around who not only contribute to the county's culture of well-being, but also lead and encourage and gently nudge their colleagues to do the same. So these leaders prioritize the physical, emotional, and social well-being of their colleagues and their teams. And they support and model workplace safety, work-life balance, and access, and make sure people have access to much-needed health and wellness resources. The work environment they've built has nurtured themselves and others to protect their health and combat burnout, as well as made public sector work more sustainable. And they are a hugely valuable part of our organization, and we truly appreciate their efforts. And frankly, they're role models. And as someone who's very hardworking, it's hard to remember to pause and take care of yourselves, but these leaders do that so well. And yesterday was the 10th Annual Wellness Leadership Luncheon, and it was held to honor these recipients. And this program, I believe, was put together by our county executive, our Human Resources Director, Rosio Kirkson, and our Wellness Program Manager, Alyssa Stanford. And attendees were able to engage in group activities and connect with other wellness leaders, as well as continue to work and think of ways to innovate and continue to uplift the well-being at work. So with that, I'd like to express our gratitude to all of the leaders for your mindful and engaging leadership. And I'm not going to read 42 names because it would take a long time, and you've all been very patient already. But you will be honored, and we'd love to get a picture. And please know that this board truly appreciates you and your staff. And I want to thank the folks who nominated you, right? Because when you do good work, people notice. And so you were nominated to be recognized. And I want to thank the county's wellness committee and our Board of Directors as well. So with that, thank you. Thank you for upholding our values and congratulations on your award. And I'd now like to invite you to take a photo with the board and receive your awards. Actually, I think we need to vote on this first, right?
Yeah, we have to take it. We have a couple more steps.
Okay.
Do we have... First of all, are there any board member comments? Seeing none, do we have public comment?
I don't have any speaker slips from chambers, so we'll take comments now on Zoom for this item, Item 3. Raise your hand at this time. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Back to you, Supervisor Corzo.
Supervisor, I don't actually believe there's a vote for this matter. It is recognition, but there's no resolution or proclamation. As important as it is, I don't think we actually need to vote.
Yeah, I don't think we could print 42 proclamations. Sorry, folks. We wouldn't even be able to all hold them. So with that, unless County Executive Callagie or Human Resources Director Rosio Kirkson want to share some words, I think we can take our picture.
I just want to also just say thank you to all our incredible leaders out there. Wellness is so important in this county. We've emphasized it at every turn, the balance of work-life, and these employees exemplify that in the departments. We couldn't do what we do without all of you. And to just echo what Supervisor Corzo said, you being recognized by your fellow employees in these roles as leaders of wellness is something to be cherished and really is an affirmation of the great job that you're doing. So thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
All right, let's take a picture.
Which, mine? Greeley.
All right. Item 4 is a presentation by Drew Diaz and Philip Greeley on Convoy of Hope. Supervisor Spear is sponsoring this item. Supervisor Spear, could I ask you please say some words to introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm thrilled that we are joined this morning by two remarkable young men, Philip Greeley and Drew Diaz. They embarked on a challenging escapade, walking across the United States, but not just for fun, but to raise money. And I'll have them tell you how much money they raised and for what purpose. But they're two San Mateo natives who started this expedition. They walked 3,600 miles from the shores of Delaware to our beloved coast here in San Francisco. They did this for six months, faced the cold, the rain, the heat, and God knows whatever else. Maybe they'll tell us. But along the way, they had 96,000 followers and kind strangers who supported them with food, shelter, and encouragement. Last month, they returned home to our beloved San Mateo County, and they did this all for a cause. So Philip and Drew, please come forward and tell us what you did and how you did it. Congratulations.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the board, Supervisor Spear for the kind words and everything that you do.
We'd also like to say thank you to our two beautiful mothers who are here today in attendance. We know we put you guys through hell these last six months, but we owe you guys everything.
A little bit of backstory on us. We've grown up in San Mateo our entire lives. We've lived three blocks away from each other since we were kids, always been best friends. You know, literally living on Alameda pretty much our whole life. And one day, we just had a crazy dream to walk across America. And we decided there was no better time to do it than right now. So we took a year off of college, took seven months, 3,600 miles, and together we raised over $90,000 for an amazing charity called Convoy of Hope.
Eight months ago, we were just two crazy kids with an even crazier dream. We got a one-way ticket to the East Coast. We didn't even know how we were going to get to the beach of Delaware because we flew into Philadelphia. Somehow, we managed. We got down. And I hope I can get this on the first try, but we put our feet in the Atlantic Ocean, and we walked through Delaware, Maryland, West Virginia, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, although all the people there were mad at me for pronouncing it Illinois's, and then Missouri, into Kansas, Colorado, Utah, Nevada, and California.
Yeah, when we flew out there, we had not been to any of these states other than Nevada and California. We're the only two. So everything was new to us. Literally before, we were just like, didn't research anything, just what goes on in Ohio? I have no idea. Just, we're just going to go and walk through it and see what happens. But one of the things that was consistent in every single state, every city, was we found good people everywhere, some of the most generous, kind people I've met in my entire life. Whether it was a hot day and a stranger who didn't even know who we were pulling over to see what we were doing, offering us a cold drink of water, or strangers offering their home when we literally had nowhere to stay. And we'd end up staying with them for a couple of days and still try and keep in contact with them now. And that was across the whole country. And I think that's something we both really want to highlight about our journey.
Absolutely. And of course, I mean, from day one, we knew that nothing would stop us. We would never quit. And part of that drive came from doing this for a charity. We knew if we stopped, so would the eyes and attention to this charity. So we're not only doing it for ourselves, but we're doing it for a charity and for people who are in some of the hardest times of their life. And this Charity Convoy of Hope, they're based out of Springfield, Missouri, and they mostly help out after disasters, giving out food, water, rebuilding shelters and communities. And we just love that. They help people in the hardest time of their life, when all else seems like it's failing. These people have some hope through Convoy of Hope.
Well, I want you to keep doing crazy because you're making a lot of sense. And I think you've highlighted that there are good people throughout this country, and we can't forget that in all that's happening around us. So we have commendations for both of you, if my colleagues would like to join me and present.
Are there any additional comments?
I just wanted to quickly share, I just read up on your journey, and I learned that you were Aragon High School students. My son... Oh, you were? Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Design tech, okay. And my son goes there now, so I'm really excited to share your story with him so that he's reminded. He's 14, and he's very self-centered right now, which is age-appropriate. But it's really refreshing to see young people not just sharing words, but actually acting on those words. It's super inspirational, and I'm really proud that you're from District 2. And... Oh, he is. Okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. And I'll just close out by saying that I'm seeing this picture of both of you running towards Francis Beach and towards the water to conclude your journey. And it's, wow, it's amazing. So thank you for everything that you've done. And thank you Supervisor Spear for making sure that their amazing journey was highlighted here.
Supervisor Gochet.
I just want to say congratulations. Thank you for your leadership and your thoughtfulness to not self-centered at all, but to be able to give back to someone else and to your lovely mothers. God bless your souls. I can't imagine what six months was like, every night, wondering where they were and how they were, if they were okay. So again, I'm proud to know that you're from San Mateo County, and your thoughtfulness will not be forgotten. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll go down and we'll take some pictures. And public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. President. We don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll go to Zoom and see if we have public comment for this item.
My name is Drew Diaz.
I'm Philip Greeley.
All right. That brings us to Item 5, which is a proclamation designated October 19th through the 25th as United Against Hate Week. This item is mine and Supervisor Corzo's, and I'll introduce this item. I'm excited to co-sponsor this proclamation along Supervisor Corzo as we recognize October 19th through the 25th as United Against Hate Week here in San Mateo County. In a time when division too often dominates the headlines and hatred shows up in acts both large and small, it is more important than ever that we come together across our differences to affirm our shared humanity. San Mateo County is home to an incredible mosaic of people. We are richly diverse in culture, language, background, and identity. That diversity is not a challenge to overcome, it's a strength to uplift. It is something we must protect and celebrate. Today, we send a clear message: There is no place for hate in our communities, not anywhere. In 2024 alone, nearly 1,200 acts of hate were reported in California. Behind each statistic is a person, often a neighbor seeking safety, support, and dignity. Let United Against Hate Week be more than a proclamation. Let it be a call to action, a reminder that each of us in every corner of San Mateo County has the power to create a culture where compassion overcomes division and love overcomes fear. Supervisor Corzo, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, President Canepa. I will just briefly add that I think, especially during times like these where hate seems rampant, it's so important to be bold and brave and to declare what this county stands for. And I think even today, we hear hateful comments, not just in public comment, but also on social media across the country, across the world. And I just think about Martin Luther King Jr.'s quote. I'm not going to get it word for word, but only light and love can drive out darkness. And I think that's what this week is about. So thank you, President Canepa, for co-sponsoring this. And I know our county will continue to show what we stand for, which is courage, compassion, and solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now have the Executive Director of the Society of Hearts Delight, Michelle Zhang, and Chief Development Officer, Yudi Deng, who will be our speakers to accept this proclamation. Yudi, are you here? Come on up, Yudi. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, County Executives. Thank you so much for this important message and proclamation. My name is Yudi Deng, Chief Development Officer for Society of Hearts Delight, a nonprofit funded in 2020 through anti-Asian hate to strengthen belonging, safety, and civic engagement among Chinese-speaking residents across Silicon Valley. In the past five years, we have partnered with cities and counties across the region with a particularly strong base in San Mateo County to connect immigrant families... to connect immigrant families with trusted local services, public safety information, and opportunities for civic participation. We are especially grateful to partner with the Office of Community Affairs. And under the leadership of Emma, Megan, and Kenny, our collaboration has built meaningful bridges with local immigrant communities. Earlier this year, we were deeply honored to be recognized by Board President David Canepa who presented us with the Society of Hearts Delight Day Resolution, which is a moment that affirmed our shared commitment to inclusion and belonging. San Mateo County's community outreach vision, building equitable access, language inclusion, and neighborhood trust mirrors our own mission. That's why our newest initiative, Ask Officer Bridge to Safety, focuses on collaboration with county departments, law enforcement, and health partners to ensure that every immigrant feels seen, supported, and safe. United Against Hate Week reminds us that hate harms more than individuals. It erodes the sense of safety that binds us together. When community organizations and the government stand side by side, we rebuild that trust and demonstrate that compassion is stronger than fear. On behalf of Society of Hearts Delight, I thank the Board and the County Executives and the staff for your leadership and for standing united with all who call this county home.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any, any comments from Board members? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
I haven't received any speaker cards from chambers, so we'll take public comment on Zoom. And we have one hand raised for Sid Young. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sheri. It's very nice to have a proclamation and I fully support it. I just was reading this morning about a woman who was brutally beaten just coming out of Nations in Daly City. And her last name was Malouf. She was just, she just finished her culinary academy. It got a degree being a pastry chef. And all she did was get off her shift and go get a Nation's order and came out and a person beat her to, you know, basically to a pulp almost in the parking lot. I hope that somehow we can make our county have a stronger sentencing or not let people out after they've committed hate crimes like this. And I noticed there was an article recently about San Francisco letting somebody out. It's just wrong. And the more we become a county and take the stance showing that we don't let people out after something like this, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Ann. Ann, please unmute and begin.
Hello, I was not prepared to talk today, but I feel that this is something that should be accepted to everyone, that there shouldn't be hate. And we saw more antisemitism than ever before in the last two years. And I would like to see a real effort made by the Board to make sure that this does not continue and that you make a real effort to not make inflammatory statements yourselves at times because it has happened. So my point is, is that we do have to make sure that hate is not a part of our speech, a part of our way. And also, just to know that if someone has an opposing view, that may not be hate. It's just simply an opposing view. So that's what I would like to say on that subject. And yes, of course, there should never be hate in any form. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I'm gonna ask you, we're gonna do, we've given a proclamation to the organization as mentioned. What I'd like you to do, in front of you, it says, "San Mateo County Stands United Against Hate." And I don't know if staff has any additional flyers, but the Board of Supervisors does. We talked a little bit about taking action. It's my hope, as we take this picture, it's sort of a reflection of our values here in San Mateo County. So I'm gonna ask each of you to bring this up when we take the picture. So with that, Supervisor Corzo, can you, before we do that, Supervisor Spear?
Mr. President, this is a week that we're recognizing. This has got to be a year-long commitment. And I think we should encourage each of us, as we do town halls, to have them focus on an anti-hate message. We did that when the Asian Anti-Hate effort was underway. And it was a very powerful town hall that we had had some years ago. But it's a great reminder that, especially now, when we have hate spewing out of our national leaders on a daily basis, that we've got to tamp it down locally and do everything we possibly can. So I think we should make a concerted effort as Board members to do something in each of our districts.
Great. Thank you so, so much. Are there any additional comments? Supervisor Corzo, would you like to make the motion?
Thank you, absolutely. I would love to make this motion. I motion to proclaim San Mateo County Stands United Against Hate Week. Thank you.
Second.
Great. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll take a picture with these lines. All right. Okay. Item Six, a proclamation designating October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Supervisor Corzo or Supervisor Gochet, could I ask one of you or both of you to please say some words to introduce this item?
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to begin. This is my third year sponsoring a proclamation designating October 20, October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'm proud to be co-sponsoring it this year with Supervisor Gochet. Domestic violence, as we know, affects people of every background, regardless of age, gender, income, or culture. And here in San Mateo County, we know that ending violence will take all of us working together, including survivors, advocates, law enforcement, healthcare providers, and community partners. Starting with the Domestic Violence Council Task Force that we formed three years ago and which has now evolved into the Coalition to End Abuse, Violence, and Exploitation. We have focused on including sexual violence, human trafficking, child and elder abuse as well. And we've been working to address this silent crisis and on making sure that we have the right services at the right time for our community members to heal. And so we'll hear more about that progress from our speakers. This proclamation is both a recognition of the work that's been done and a call to keep moving forward until all are free from abuse, violence, and exploitation. And now I'd like to pass it over to Supervisor Gochet for her remarks. And then we'll invite our speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo. As we all know, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, a time to stand with survivors, honor those we've lost, and recommit to safety and dignity for everyone in San Mateo County. Domestic violence can look different in every situation. It can be physical, physical harm, emotional abuse, or words that slowly diminish your spirit. But we are here to uplift your voices and remind you that you are not alone. Many of us have walked this path or know someone who has because this issue touches every community, including our own. In recent months, I've visited the family justice centers across the state where survivors can access support, counseling, and legal aid and under one roof. They are designed around compassion, centering survivors rather than systems. And along with Supervisor Corzo, I am committed to bringing that same model here to San Mateo County, a place of hope and healing for everyone to seek, seeking safety. Our local partners, some of whom we'll hear from today, continue to respond with courage and care. This month, let's stand with them, speak up, share resources, and remind survivors they are not alone. Together, we can make sure everyone in our county feels safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you so much. And I just also, before introducing our speakers, I want to give a special shout-out to two organizations that are very much grassroots organizations that have been doing this work in their communities. They're hard-to-reach communities for many years, and that is, Alice Kumares is an organization that serves the Filipino community with domestic violence survivors, as well as an organization I just found out about on Saturday at a Duvali event. And that organization is Maitri, which also serves specifically survivors from the South Asian community. With that, though, we will now be inviting our speakers to share about the work that this county has been doing. And so I'd like to invite our Family Justice Center Program Director Peggy Sherbonne and Cora Executive Director Karen Ferguson to share their remarks. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Board of Supervisors, County Executives Office, Karen Ferguson with Cora. And so we appreciate the proclamation because it highlights, again, the statistics that we know. One in four women, one in seven men, one in two transgender individuals is impacted by intimate partner abuse in their life. And so what that means is that as we sit here in this room, we are sitting here knowing friends, family members, colleagues, neighbors, or we ourselves are survivors of intimate partner abuse. And so it is vital that we have things like a proclamation to honor and recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month because with this proclamation, we bring to light that perpetrators of abuse will be held accountable and that for those who are, whose lives have been turned upside down, we see you and we share that you are not alone. At Cora, we are excited about all of the different ways that we've partnered with the county. So we have the Spark Program, which is making sure that children who have been living in the cycle of abuse are insured access to mental health services. We have the Divert Program, which now is allowing Cora coresponders to go in Daly City, San Mateo, and North Fair Oaks with the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement officers directly to 911 scenes to provide support to families. And we have the Guaranteed Income Program, giving 20 households $1,000 each a month to ensure that the financial constraints that often happen due to abuse be not the reason that somebody returns to an abusive situation. Cora is excited to be out there in the community besides our main office in San Mateo. We now have the East Palo Alto Office, which Supervisor Gochet is very familiar with. But now we also have the Half Moon Bay Coastside Satellite Clinic that Supervisor Mueller has been supportive of. And we are located in San Bruno in South San Francisco. And we're extremely excited to be now partnering with the Family Justice Center, and we will be a presence there. So I'll turn it over to my colleague Peggy to finish this up.
Thank you, Karen. I'm honored to be here today and working beside Karen on this project. So I want to extend my thanks and gratitude to the Board of Supervisors, the County Executives, County Council, and the citizens of San Mateo for recognizing domestic violence, or October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This proclamation that you're putting forward is not only a statement of awareness, it's a declaration of your commitment. I'll echo some of the statements already said by a couple of the supervisors. Domestic violence affects every community regardless of income, background, or circumstances. And its impact echoes through families, schools, communities, and neighborhoods. So if you're not directly impacted by it, somebody you know most certainly is, as Karen mentioned as well. Yet here in San Mateo County, you're choosing to respond with collaboration, compassion, and action. So I just want to express my deep appreciation to the county leadership for recognizing the need and establishing the path to creating a family justice center. I, for one, know how well they work and the great, the great things that they do for communities and for survivors. And I'm excited to do that work within this county. They're a place where survivors of all forms of abuse can find hope, safety, and healing under one roof versus going to all the many different organizations within the county. This effort represents not only just progress, but a vision. It's a recognition that no one should have to navigate trauma alone and repeat their story to multiple systems in their search for help. And that is something to be proud of. This foundation, the foundation of this vision is built on partnership. And so I want to acknowledge the many community partners who do this work every day and have, have done this work every day prior to my arrival here. And that is law enforcement, mental health professionals, the legal advocates within the District Attorney's Office, medical providers, Cora Rape Trauma Services, and so many others who stand united in the mission to protect, support, and empower survivors. Each of them brings their expertise, but more importantly, they bring hope to the table. Together, we are creating a future where victims become survivors and then survivors can become leaders. So thank you again to the County of San Mateo for your leadership and your partnership in this essential work. Your recognition today reminds every survivor that their voice matters, their safety matters, and their community stands with them.
Thank you so much. And I'll just also share that I know that you two are specifically working to find leaders to be part of a Survivor Advisory Committee. And I know we have some representatives from Alice here, and we are in process of connecting you with Maitri. And we want the community to know that if you are a survivor and you are at a place in your healing journey where you are able to give back and be a voice for others, we want to hear your voice on this Survivor Advisory Committee. And we welcome your partnership in this work. With that, I will hand it over to our president.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any comments from the Board?
I do. I just want to thank my colleagues for bringing this item and thank you all for your work. And say to the Board and County Executives Office how grateful I am for the Family Justice Center. It's not just about making it easy for navigate the system. I think people don't fully understand how difficult it is for someone going through this who's now having to figure out how to get their own income and put their life back together, often a situation where people have exerted total control of their life, to then also try to figure out how to go ahead and get counseling, how to get all of these services, all the time when they're navigating the fact that they're afraid that that person is out there stalking them, ready to abuse them again. So I just can't express enough my gratitude to all of you for this work.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. Supervisor Spear.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your good work. I'm, um, I'd be curious if you could give us a profile of those who are experiencing domestic violence now in this county. It, it's changed over the decades, so maybe you could do that. And I'd also like to have the, um, County Executive evaluate whether the Family Justice Center should also have a component of child support enforcement. It's often not the first thing that these, um, these individuals, these abused men and women are thinking about, but it also is a critical component in terms of them being able to survive. So if you could give us a profile, that would be helpful.
For, for Cora, I think that what I can share is some of the demographics, that right now still, despite our, our, our work to make sure that we're as inclusive as possible, 90% of the individuals who are coming to us are women. Over 60% are, would identify as Hispanic. So, you know, in some ways, we are making roads and avenues in, and other ways, I think we're not seeing what we know in terms of the national statistics. So we're underrepresented in certain groups. Most, um, families that need emergency shelter or come in through the 911 system have children under age five. So that's been a really important statistic that we've been looking at and making sure that we're addressing. So you could say from that, a lot of our, our individuals are parents. And as we look at these 20, 20 households that are being given guaranteed income, they are all families with young children and struggling not only with the abuse, not only with the economics, but also with the childcare.
Yes, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing, um, those demographics for Cora. I do want to also highlight that a lot of domestic violence goes under-reported, um, and, you know, we have some folks from Alice here who know very well that, um, sometimes folks want help, but they don't want law enforcement involved, and, and those are, that's data that's hard to collect. So just wanted to, to name that as well. We've also actually, uh, heard from a lot of, uh, women, people who, uh, you know, come from higher income brackets, who face, uh, trouble finding resources, especially when their income is from their abusive partner. And so, uh, one of the, one of the goals of the Family Justice Center work is to also be, be available, uh, have services available to that demographic as well because, um, again, domestic violence cuts, cuts across all demographics, and so, um, yeah, that's, that's part of our work as well.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one speaker card from Deacon Lauren McCombs, and then we'll turn to Zoom.
My name is Deacon Lauren Patton-McCombs. I'm, I'm from Christ Church, uh, in Portola Valley in Woodside, and I come to you as a woman. I come to you as someone who lives in San Carlos for over, I think I'm at 40 years in San Carlos now. Don't do the math, but this is important, what I want to say right now. I was going to a local business this last week, and I observed domestic violence right in front of my eyes between a, a woman and her ex-husband. I helped her understand what her rights were. I helped her understand, uh, that she could call 911 with which she did not want to. It was not part of what she knows and what she does, but she did. And ever since then, her ex-husband has been coming to her house, to her business, every day. We're in the process of trying to, helping her navigate, um, getting a restraining order, but I just want us to all, with our eyes, to see and to look for those situations which are causing harm. And I appreciate all the good work the county's doing and these other organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon McCombs, for everything you do. Are there any other comments?
We'll now turn to comments on Zoom. This is for item number six for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Please raise your hand. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Okay, I'll bring it back.
Thank you. I just want to share that, um, you know, based on our, our last public comment, um, I think it's important that people recognize that there are certain behaviors that, um, would, would be considered, uh, high-risk factors for lethality. That's some of the work that we've been doing. I know Cora, um, Karen from Cora recently presented to our coalition, um, their new assessment tool for, um, high-risk lethality indicators. I'm not, I don't know them all by heart right now, but I do believe that, you know, someone repeatedly stalking and pursuing their, their, um, former partner is considered a high-risk, um, behavior. And so I really want to encourage you to connect with Cora and other organizations to get that, that person help, and that's really what the coalition is, uh, meant to do. And also to educate us as community members on what behaviors we can look out for, um, because sometimes when survivors are experiencing this kind of behavior, they, they don't have the objectiveness to understand how, how risky it actually is and how bad it's gotten. So, uh, thank you for, for sharing that. We, we want to de-stigmatize, um, domestic violence and make sure that it's not something, make sure that survivors know it's not something that they should be ashamed of. They deserve help, they deserve community, and, um, that, that's one of our goals. So, um, with that, unless Supervisor Gochet wants to add anything, um, we'd love to, to get this passed.
No, I just think you, you've hit it on the, the nail on the head with everything that is going on. And just to the women who are surviving or, or, or just getting by, no one has the right to make you feel less than or to be abusive. Words carry so much weight, and we know that there are a lot of women out there surviving or, um, dealing with this. Know that there are resources through Cora and other organizations. It's okay to speak up and, and get help. So with that, I will turn it back to Supervisor Coro.
You can go ahead and make the motion. Yeah.
With that, I would like to make a motion. Let me go back here. Proclaiming that designated in October 25th as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And we have a proclamation, and I'd actually love to invite anyone who feels like they are in this fight to, to, um, end violence in our community, law enforcement, community organizations, survivors, or allies. Feel free to join the picture. Thank you.
Yeah. If you guys could, can you do a back row?
I know my place.
Perfect.
You step back.
There you go. Thank you.
And to those who are in the, the, the room here today, we are wearing pink because of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We don't, we do not have a proclamation for it today, but we want to just remind individuals that we know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we want to encourage both men and women to do your monthly checks to make sure that you're okay. Okay?
Mr. President, can I just add to that? 300,000 women every year get diagnosed with breast cancer. It is so much more common than some even, um, suspect. So it's very, very important to never, ever miss your mammograms and to do the self-checks as, as you should every month.
Great. Great. Thank you very much. That moves us to item seven, which is a proclamation designating October as Filipino-American History Month. Uh, this item is mine and sponsored by Supervisor Gochet, and I'll introduce the item. It is my honor to sponsor this proclamation along Supervisor Gochet, recognizing October as the Filipino-American History Month in San Mateo County. Since 1992, this month has served as a time to celebrate the deep and lasting contributions of Filipino-Americans to the history of the United States. Filipino-American history is American history. It tells stories not only of culture and heritage, but also of struggle, resilience, and leadership. From the first Filipinos who arrived in Morro Bay to the labor leaders in Delano and the educators advancing ethnic studies today, the Filipino-American community continues to shape the progress of this country. Over 4 million Filipino-Americans live across the United States, and over 1 million live in California. Here in San Mateo County, with 33,000 Filipino residents in Daly City and North County alone, their presence is strong and vital. Filipino-Americans contribute every day to our political, social, economic, and cultural life. They're educators, nurses, small-business owners, public servants, and community leaders. We are proud to recognize their legacy and reaffirm our commitment to uplifting their voices and supporting their civic engagement. With this proclamation, we celebrate Filipino-American History Month and honor the enduring impact of Filipino-Americans on our shared future. You know, I do want to take the, the opportunity to recognize, um, some folks here, uh, community leaders. We have an incredible workforce. I want to recognize, uh, Dr. J Africa. I want to recognize Kristy, uh, for all her work. I want to recognize Liza, um, the two-time mayor of Daly City, council member Justin Manalo, um, Perla, I like that, don't you? I like it too. Uh, Perla Ibarrientos. And then I also want to recognize someone who's done an amazing, amazing job, um, and that's Ben Menor. Ben, thank you for your years of, of just dedicated service. And so, um, with that, um, I will kick it off to Supervisor Gochet. Kick it back.
Thank you, President Canepa. More than 1.7 million Filipinos call California home, including over 40,000 right here in San Mateo County. Their story is deeply tied to the state's history. The first-ever Filipinos in the United States arrived at Morro Bay on October 18, and I have 1587, brought here as enslaved people under Spanish rule. Their struggle and resilience mirror the fight for freedom and dignity that connects so many communities. Today, Filipino-Americans are leaders, educators, caregivers, innovators, and public servants. Their contributions can be seen in every corner of our, our county, our state, and our country. I'm especially proud that Redwood City recently elected the first Filipina council member, Marcela Padilla. And just as their ancestors helped build this state, their presence continues to shape its future and the future of our country. So as we honor Filipino-American History Month, we honor a story that belongs to us all. Filipino history is American history. Mabuhay. And I'm looking at Josh, did I say it right? And I want to honor, I mean, recognize Josh on our team as well. Thank you so much.
All right. Awesome. I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't, and he's in the back there, um, the first Filipino-American Chief of Staff in the County of San Mateo, and that's, um, Atanasio Bayudin. Tony Bayudon, give it up for Tony. Looking good in that barong, Tony. Pretty good. All right. And so with that, it gives me great honor, uh, to have two speakers. Um, I'm gonna ask, um, a very young, is it 92 or 91?
90.
90. A very young, 91, I think it says in February, which?
9-0.
9-0. The godmother of the, uh, the Filipino-American community, Perla Ibarrientos. Then I will ask, uh, Daly City Councilmember, uh, Justin Manalo to, to say a couple of words with, uh, with Perla.
My goodness, I'm 90.
No pressure.
Mr. David Canepa, President of the Board, members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. It's good to see all of you. I'm Perla Ibarrientos. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Filipino-Bayanican Resource Center in Daly City, a nonprofit-based organization serving Daly City and San Mateo County. Thank you for having me this morning. Well, I don't know what to say. You know better than I do, hearing those Philippine history year after year, and you two have just spoken about it. So what I'm going to say is just thank you from the Filipino community for proclaiming this month as the Philippine History Month. Thank you so much for that. And also, I would like to thank you, all of you, for your services rendered to San Mateo County, for the good works that you have been doing year after year, from the community, from the Filipino-Bayanican Resource Center. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Also, thank you for this proclamation. I'm honored to receive this for the Filipino community and to the Filipino-Bayanican Resource Center. Thank you, thank you so much, and have a wonderful day.
Sigay, sigay, salamat po.
Salamat po.
Uh, we will now have, um, Justin Manal, Councilmember Daly City, and the first history maker, the first Filipina elected to the Daly City Council, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. President, and thank you so much for the Board of Supervisors for acknowledging Filipino-American History Month in October. Uh, you know, um, your partnership in, um, our cities is so important. Uh, we know day in, day out that our Filipino-American community and community as a whole, um, really fights towards having more opportunities, housing. Um, today, we talked about domestic violence and, um, want to acknowledge Alice as a, a key organization that really, uh, was birthed out of Claire Tampoco and, um, their advocacy in that respect. But thank you so much. We have our anchor organization, Filipino-Bayanican Resource Center, who has served for 35 years in our community, um, and also, um, Kapwa. That is a new organization that also serves our, uh, as a social enterprise for youth and young people. Um, and so it's an honor to be here with each and every one of you today in partnership as we celebrate Filipino-American History Month. Thank you for their comments of sharing that history, that Filipinos first landed here on October 18, 1587. Um, so thank you, uh, for this time, and I look forward, um, to all of you also as well. Come on and visit Daly City whenever you can. I know, uh, obviously, our president does, uh, but, um, thank you for the all that you do day in and day out. I know it's been a tremendous year for each and every one of you, Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Councilmember. Uh, Dr. J, would you like just to say, uh, just a couple of words? I think it's important. I think it's important for you. Dr. J. knows how to handle these situations.
First of all, I want to apologize that I'm not wearing my barang today. I was here for the wellness and for some of our items, but we're good. Just like, you know, all actually though, as you said, President Canapa, that Philippine history is American history, Filipino-American history. But it's really just a pleasure to be part of the county that really is looking out for the community. I am deeply humbled to be in a leadership position under Health Colleen Chaoof, and be able to do the work to help the residents be better. When I immigrated in this country in my twenties, didn't really realize the disparities that many Filipino-Americans were experiencing accessing services related to mental health. Language has been a barrier, and that's really a fundamental right. And so with the leadership and the guidance of Tita Alice Bulas, who passed away, Tita Perla, you know, people like me that really are following their footsteps in a different way. So I'm really grateful to be of service to the residents of this county.
Thank you so much, Dr. J. With that, I don't know if there are any board comments? Yes?
I'm really excited that we will be voting on this. It's very worthy of lifting up the history of the Filipino community in our county and in the state and in the country and in the world, frankly. I just want to briefly speak to the, what's the word here? The comfort I feel when I hear someone speaking Tagalog, and although it's a totally different language, there are some similarities with Spanish. And so it feels connected, and you know, I know that's because we were colonized by the same people. But having that in common is very special. And I think I actually asked my partner to join and listen in on the meeting because he's half Filipino, and so I've learned more about the Filipino culture since meeting him. But it's truly special to also know that the Filipino community specifically, I know for like weddings is so united, and people that you don't even know just give you money, which is crazy. But there's so much beauty in the Filipino culture. So thank you Supervisor, President Canapa for bringing this item, and thank you to everyone who's here representing.
Thank you. I do want to say something. Many of us know our good friend Ray Buena Ventura. Ray Buena Ventura was on the city council, and this happened on Friday. My good friend is Luis Alejo. And so Monterey County has appointed the first Filipino-American private defender. And that is Ray Buena Ventura. He was previously with Lake County. And that is, when you think about it, that is historic in nature. And so, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. President, we did receive one speaker card from chambers for Kristi Morales Kumazua.
Just wanted to say thank you, Board President David Canapa. You've been a champion of our work. Thank you also to county executives, other executives on the board, for recognizing Filipino-American History Month, and for recognizing our trailblazers like Attilaiza from PRC, Tita Perla, Dr. J. Africa, all of these folks, and also Manu Ben Menor. Tita Perla in particular, I'd like to thank her for really believing in CAPWA Cultural Center. I'm Kristi Morales Kumazua. My pronouns are she/her. I'm the Director of Operations, as well as a licensed marriage and family therapist. So folks who don't know of CAPWA Cultural Center, we are a wellness and youth-focused social enterprise, and we really offer a touch point to our youth and to our community. And so I know my time is about to be up, but I wanted to say that it's so important, more now than ever, to support our organizations like CAPWA, PRC, because of what's happening with our administration, the White House administration, and how our immigrant communities are being impacted, including the Filipino community. And as someone who works on the ground, in the community, in the cafe, our social enterprise is a boba cafe, which makes it a natural entry point and touch point for our youth who requested that, I'm seeing the stress, the mounting stress. And even before this and during the pandemic, our youth had one of the highest rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. And that number, you know, hasn't gone down. And so it's important to focus on celebrating the culture, our history, our contributions. And please continue to support our organizations that, and our communities that need help more now than ever because of what's happening nationally and globally. And so I'd just like to thank you for spotlighting this very important month and for all your support. Thank you.
And I just want to say, Kristi, thank you. You know, I've had the opportunity, if you love boba, this is the space. But most importantly, I think, you know, as the federal government makes these cuts, especially around DEI, and there's a gap, you know, we really need to see what we can do to reinvest in our communities. I know the space, I had the opportunity to be there. Where people were in conversation around mental health, around loneliness. And these are really safe places for people. And you know, you have my commitment to make sure, you know, as we move forward, to see what we can do as a county. Because people do feel comfortable in places that embrace their language, their culture. But I just want to thank you and Stephanie for the extraordinary job you have been innovators in this space. And I think, most importantly, what you've done is you've created a place. There, it's sort of an unincorporated Daly City, but a place that really is community. So I hope you're able to go home and realize all the great things that you guys have done. It's never easy being a nonprofit, but you've done an incredible job. And so, do we have any online comments?
Yes, Mr. President, we do have one hand raised for X. X, please unmute and begin.
Yes, thank you. I am fully in support of this proclamation, and that's why I'm deeply upset to see that it was propagandized by Nola Corzo, who made it about herself and with earlier proclamation against hate, stated that she felt some bond with the Filipino community because both her heritage and the Philippines was colonized by the same people. Exactly who are those people? The Spaniards, Caucasians? I believe she probably has some European blood in her because most people in Southern and Latin America are a mix of multiple races. And I just think when people make broad accusations, claims like that, it really minimizes not only proclamation, but actually spreads hate. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, that was the last speaker.
All right, I'll bring it back.
Board President, I'm sorry. I just wanted to invite everybody to our anniversary on Saturday. Because of your support, we've been able to, we're celebrating our first year, so I'd like to invite everyone out to come see us and celebrate. It's been a great year of community, culture, and connection.
Can you give us the details, where and?
CAPWA Cultural Center is in Daly City. We're just a few doors down from Holy Angels Catholic Church. So we're at 11B St. Pedro Road. It's free. We'll have the boba drinks flowing. We'll have music, celebrating, and good food. So hope to see folks there. It's 11:00 AM to 3:30 PM.
Okay, wonderful. I'll be there.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Gosey, would you like to make a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
All right, I'll second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gosey?
Yes.
President Canapa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Picture time. All right, so we'll now move to item eight, which is a presentation by the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission regarding post-Measure A plans for the sheriff's office. We'll ask the county executive to kick this off.
I believe ICAC would like to make a presentation after conferring with their group. And I believe Supervisor Corzo was sponsoring this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kalima Salahourin is here to represent the ICAC, the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission. And as a liaison to our commission, I'm really proud of the work that the ICAC has accomplished. And I think at this moment, their input is very critical. I think we've all heard loud and clear that the community wants input, transparency, and clear communication. And I look forward to hearing the recommendations that really take that to heart. And I also want to make sure we remember that this commission does play an important role in advising the board. And when Supervisors Locum and Pine created it, we could not have anticipated the seriousness of the challenges the sheriff's office would face. And so I'm grateful for the ICAC's work and that we will get to hear from them. And this is an informational item only. And I think the goal is for us to just keep in mind and hear the recommendations.
Kalima, go ahead.
Kalima, please, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you so much, President Canapa, Vice President Corzo, and the rest of the board members for the Board of Supervisors. Before I start, again, I always want to thank the staff that works on our team. So Adam, Emma, Tara, Jennifer, everybody that helped me get this together rather quickly because I was told Thursday last week that I was going to be here today. So, moving next. So for our agenda, just going through the introduction, the goals, recommendations, conclusion, and then taking time if you have any questions for me. Next item, or next slide. So some background, really quickly, again, for those that don't know, on ICAC and our commissioners, again, we were formed as an advisory, a civilian advisory, for the Board of Supervisors in regards to the sheriff's office. There are currently nine commissioners appointed, consisting of seven members and two alternates. We have all the spaces filled except for the member that would be nominated by the sheriff's office. That space is currently vacant. Thankfully, we have two very active alternates, Rebecca Carabez and Alexis Lewis. Alexis is here today. And then we were recently joined in District One by Reginald Dewey. Thank you so much, Supervisor Spear, for appointing him. He's been a fabulous addition so far to our commission. Moving on. So again, I always like to ground in our mission statement. So you know where the decision-making is coming from and how we are making our decisions. Our mission is to provide recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding the sheriff's office to enhance public confidence and foster mutual respect and trust internally and externally. We recommend policies, programs, and practices that reflect community needs to uphold accountability, transparency, and justice. And we, again, held our goal-setting retreat on January 11, 2025, and decided to focus on three areas: community and staff engagement, improving communication between inmates and families, and transparency and accountability. And I am here, Alexis and myself are on the Transparency and Accountability Subcommittee, and I'm here representing that subcommittee's recommendations that were approved by ICAC. Next slide. So I really have grounded myself, again, I talk a lot about grounding, in reseeding trust. I have been very blessed to, we spent the first couple of months of ICAC hearing directly from the sheriff's office and staff. And that did a lot for me to learn more about the woodwork that's happening there and seeing how we can ensure that the community also hears that. Because there's been a lot of focus on the areas that are problematic, but there's also a lot of hard work happening. And how do we reseed that trust and rebuild that trust so that the community has confidence in their sheriff's office? So next slide. So our goals here and our recommendation, and this is a recommendation of how to involve the community in the process to replace the sheriff. And this is not a recommendation on how you go about that process. This is just a recommendation on how to involve the community, regardless of which process, whether you choose appointment or election. So I like to stay outcome-focused. And so what I would hope to see at the end of this is that there is a clear replacement plan that's been established and well-defined for replacing the sheriff, independent of the decision pathway that you choose. Community input engagement, where a plan was implemented that incorporated community input into that process, that there was communication that ensured the replacement plan is accessible across the county, especially multilingual and through other accessibility issues. And then normalizing and having this be the new pathway of normalizing transparent community input into any process that helps build the integrity of the sheriff's office. Next slide. So our recommendations, how do we do those? This is how we recommend how we go about doing those things. So developing a clear, transparent process, and then communing that process post-Measure A and the removal of Sheriff Corpus. So how are you, what is helping you determine which process you would proceed in replacing the sheriff? How are you determining if you're going to do a special election or an appointment and communicating to the community why you decided either or? What's the process and timeline for both options, communicating that out? Who's eligible for either option? Are the same people eligible for either option, or is there differential? Who is currently the leadership in the sheriff's office? And what are their responsibilities? Do they have the full mantle of responsibilities, or is there a limitation? Complete and communicating the transparency, I'm sorry, the transition plans that's happened right now. So how did the leadership move into that transition? And then what's the plan to transition the new leader in, whether it's election or appointment? And then, once you finalize the decision on how to replace the sheriff, creating a central hub to house all the above information. I think starting a new place to do that, that possibly links to the old location that had the history of all the steps that happened with Sheriff Corpus. But I think it's great to start fresh and new. Again, making sure that this is accessible to a multilingual community. And then developing a plan to engage stakeholders through either process, communicating what that plan is in this area. Next slide. So if we're talking about election, I think collecting fact-based info for voters. As someone who served on a municipality myself, around elections, you are able to share information that's based in fact and that's not leaning voters one way or the other. So a brief background on the purpose of the election. So a brief background on the purpose of the election, I think especially since this is a special election and as you all are elected officials. You know, especially for local elections, people don't, in elections that are not in the normal rotation. Making sure that people understand what the purpose of this election is. So some background on the why of the election. The role and duties of the sheriff's office, so people understand what they're voting for, who's eligible again to run for this office. The length of term for this position, there's a lot of confusion around the length of term because Sheriff Corpus had a six-year term. So people don't really understand that this is not a two-year, that this person is going to be serving for four years. So hopefully that will weigh in on the seriousness of this vote if we do go to an election. And then I say the election timing because the timing affects voter turnout. Because even if, whether regardless if it's a special election or if it's held in June, those are lower turnout elections. As we all know, people turn out for the big ones in November. So having this information online, but possibly sending out a mailer to alert voters that there will be an election. And ensuring that they understand the gravity of the situation so that they participate in that election. Next slide. So for an appointment, incorporating community input. And so I first want to say that if you choose the appointment route, the 30-day appointment route, I know that this is a very tight timeline. So I want to acknowledge that, that it is going to be a lot of work to incorporate community input in that tight timeline. But as I say in the third bullet, where there's a will, there's a way. And I have seen the county put together and scaffold amazing communication in very tight time rounds around certain inflection points that are serious to ensure that the community is involved. So using a process that allows community involvement, helping to demonstrate that the chosen candidate reflects the values, needs, and safety and priorities of the county. And because the appointment process is so fast, I think it's helpful to have community input so they can see that the candidates were quality, that there was a rigor that was applied. It wasn't just we picked this person because they were available, that there was a process that went and into picking this person. And that that, those folks, those community members can help share that news. Other municipalities have faced similar situations. Because I have come from an education background, I always fall back to education examples. You know, I use myself, we learned mid-year, one year, that our superintendent was leaving for another job. And you know, for a superintendent, we have to replace in the school year. So very tight timeline. And again, having that same 30 days, really working to, for example, have a questions that went straight to the community. So we had every candidate in the application process answer questions with the acknowledgement that these were going to go to the community members so that they could have a flavor of who each of the candidates were. Incorporating our PTO presidents in the different rounds, so they had one round so that they could give us feedback. But also communicating that the ultimate decision would be left up to us as school board members. So that's what we did on a smaller level. On the next slide, you see an example that's happened at a county-wide level. I hold up the Community College District, who, when I talk about what we did, I actually borrowed it from them. There's no need to recreate the will of someone else is doing a very good job. And so I watched in similar situations when the Community College District's chancellor, again, ran into legal issues and had to be removed. And they had to replace the chancellor in a very tight timeline because again, it was in the middle of a year of, they don't call it a school year, but in the middle of a course of curriculum. So they developed a process to replace the chancellor. They had a clear replacement process. I included the link so that you could see what I'm talking about. They had a website that was completely dedicated to the replacement of the chancellor. They had incorporated community stakeholders into that process. I am offering ICAC, we could possibly serve that role because there's numbers that are representatives of each area of the county. They had a finalist page. And on the finalist page, on their finalist page, the finalists are shown and their resumes are displayed. But I've also seen finalist pages because depending on the municipality, they may have candidates that have jobs elsewhere and they can't share who they are. So they had them anonymously listed, like candidate one, candidate two, candidate three. But they had the questions that were pre-given to them to answer listed there. And community members could go in and vote for their candidate based on the questions that they gave and also give feedback on each candidate. So there are ways to pick some of these items, pick one or two, do all, to ensure that there are, there is some community involvement and that the community sees the process as part of the process and hopefully can share out the process. What the Community College District did is they used videos. It doesn't have to be that fancy, but they had videos, video bios of each person. And then they had them answering those key questions that were included in their application. Next slide. So in conclusion, we again, we recommend that the Board of Supervisors develop and implement a communication plan that incorporates stakeholders to address the uncertainties surrounding the sheriff's office. And I'm just going to read this because when I wrote it, I didn't want to forget the key parts of this message, which is, "Whether the path forward is appointment or election, restoring trust requires more than just the procedural vote that you all will take. It demands a commitment to inclusive dialogue, multilingual outreach, and a public-facing roadmap that ensures that every resident understands what comes next and how they can participate." So you know, with a election, of course, the community is going to be part of voting. But ensuring that as many members of our community are part of that vote and they understand exactly what they're voting for. And with an appointment, there's also ways to incorporate members of the public from a diverse background of the county and ensuring in the same way that they understand what comes next and that they can fully participate. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments?
You are the chair of the commission, right?
I am the chair. I forgot to mention that.
Chair Salahourin, I just, I want to thank you for your leadership on this commission. I want to thank the commission for the work that you've done to not just carefully consider and represent the community, but also, I'm just kind of in awe, like these recommendations I think are very clear, very actionable, and a best practice really for transparency, community inclusion, and also for, you know, stakeholders. And we know there are stakeholders, the entire sheriff's office, leadership, staff, the captains, the lieutenants, the deputy, the sheriff's deputies. They are all stakeholders as well. But we have a lot of people in our community that are concerned right now about immigration, about ICE, about the potential to, you know, for collaboration there. And people really are concerned about what will happen with this change in leadership. I think your recommendations have clearly and very, very objectively laid out where we can really hold a high bar for the process that we undertake. And I just want to take a moment to publicly share that I personally have zero commitment to a single person to fill the seat whether through appointment or election. I think the process is key. And the processes that you have recommended for either route, I think are very, very good. And I'm just grateful that you've taken your experience as a former school board member and honestly, community leader and advocate and led this commission and been able to provide these recommendations. And I know this is not an action item. We are a week out from the removal vote that happened last week. We still have three weeks as a board. But I do think it's really important that as a board, we keep in mind all of these recommendations and be very objective. And just to state for the record, we as a board have not had any discussion about whether we will do, move forward with an appointment or a special election. And any comments that have been made about that have been, you know, for board members speaking as individuals. And so I would like to ask whether the board can give direction to the CEO on considering plans for either, considering these plans for either route. And then, you know, we will obviously make our decision as a board at a later date and have discussion at a later date. But I do think that in terms of making sure that the information is available to everyone and that there are engagement opportunities for stakeholders, I think that's best practice. And I think that's something that we can and should commit to.
Great. Thank you very, thank you very much. You know, first of all, I just want to say thank you to ICAC. I think what's before us today is a presentation through county council. There's no action taken on this item, correct?
That's true. This is not an action item. It's an information item.
And I do want the public to know that backs us in. Our act, our next item is item nine, which is the discussion of the options to fill the vacancy. Is that correct, county council?
Yes, Mr. President. That would be a good time to talk about all the various things that Supervisor Corzo in fact was referencing.
Yeah, I misspoke. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. It's all right. It's been a long day. So I think in the next item, the board will discuss sort of what the options are. But I just want to thank you, Kalima. I know you're my appointee on ICAC. What I like to do, I don't know if there are other comments. I see there are. I see Supervisor Mueller. Then go to public comment, but we'll go to Supervisor Mueller. Supervisor Mueller.
Yeah, I just want to thank the ICAC. I know how much you all wrestle with it, wrestle with these issues and how seriously you take it. There are obviously on this board and even within the ICAC, various differences of opinions. But I think it's really important that we do hear from the ICAC, that we hear what your opinion is and that we consider that. And so I want to, as with every commission, obviously, not every recommendation is going to be taken. But to have the input and to be able to thoughtfully consider it and to know how passionately people are putting in the time is really important. And I want to make sure that you all understand how much we do care about that and are grateful to you for that. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been a great team.
All right.
I would just, I would just say, Kalima, thank you for your leadership and to the entire ICAC committee and team. I'm looking at Rob back there who represents as well. Thank you for all of the work that you've done and the meetings that you've put together to help us, to help guide us. It's good to have some framework. So I just appreciate the commitment and the dedication throughout this whole process.
Supervisor Spear.
Thank you. Kalima, I too want to add my gratitude for the work that you have done and that the ICAC has done. You've certainly laid out what the options are very clearly and provided some, I think, good advice about how we can be as transparent and inclusive as possible. I just was curious to know, when you did have your meeting yesterday, I believe, how many people from the public were there?
From the public? Because it was a special meeting that we called, you know, I think like two days before. Was there like five or six? Six, yeah.
I just, and I.
And then 24 on Zoom, I'm hearing.
Okay, 24 on Zoom.
Yeah.
This is going to be a very important effort that the board will undertake, however we undertake it. But the public has got to be wholeheartedly and completely included in this process, which means we're going to have to do a lot more outreach than maybe we have done in the past. But thank you again for your work.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we go to public comment?
Sure, Mr. President. We'll start with speaker cards from chambers. We're on item number eight and we'll go to Rob Solano.
Morning. Morning, all. Mr. President, honorable supervisors, senior staff. I just want to thank my fellow commissioners for all the hard work that we've all done. It was, and sitting on another board, it was a pleasure working with these individuals the last few months. And just a group of dedicated and highly professional group. I just ask as a member of the group that they've heard the presentation that was already completed. But for open transparency, for sure, the community input. And I think the representation of union membership should be a part of the paneling, if that's what you all decide. Again, I just want to thank you as a board.
Thank you, Mr. Solano. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President. We do have two speakers from Zoom. We'll start with X, followed by Remy Tan. X, please unmute and begin.
Yes, I'm going to state why you should not consider ICAC's opinion and I need to go over the backstory of it. In 2024, I came across an Instagram account that, based on several clear indicators, I believe belonged to a member of the ICAC Commission. The account contained degrading and disturbing images of people with disabilities. And one image that particularly hit home was a woman choking a man. I was dearly disturbed and felt that this individual was not an appropriate representative. After months of trying to raise the issue, I finally got notice from the county that he had been removed. However, at the April meeting, Kalima publicly stated that the commissioner had been removed for missing three meetings. This was a lie. I don't know why she did it, but it seems like she's trying to protect this individual. And as Supervisor Grisley said earlier during the domestic violence proclamation, no one has a right to make somebody feel less than. By lying, this is exactly what Kalima did to me. When she made that false statement, I felt violated all over again. She needs to be held accountable for her lies and this needs to be a transparent organization. And with her at the helm, this is not transparent. She has not corrected the lies. I did a freedom of information request to confirm that he was not removed for missing three meetings in a row. I've reached out to both Canepa and Spear's office and have gotten nowhere on this issue. And if you claim that this is supposed to be transparent and that you can care about domestic violence, you will make sure that she is held accountable for her lies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, X.
Thank you. Mr. President, would you like to make a last call at this time?
Let's do a last call.
Okay. Members of the public, this is a last call to raise your hand for this item. We're on item eight for the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission presentation. Okay, a final call has been made and the last speaker for this item will be April Vargas. Remy Tan, please unmute and begin.
Hello, again, Remy Tan, architect and resident Pacifica. Thank you, board, for appointing the ICAC. And Kalima, I know you from PTO and then the school boards and you've done a fine job. And the recommendations that the ICAC has made are very, very clear. And the board should definitely follow that advice. Unfortunately, from what the last speaker was saying, there's some issues of bullying and inappropriate behavior. And definitely the Board of Supervisors needs to thoroughly investigate that and make sure that if somebody is, you know, violates some laws, that they are prosecuted and, you know, gone through a court process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank the ICAC for all the wonderful work.
Sorry, Mr. President. We do have a couple of more speakers.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Yes, did you want to continue at this time?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I do want to continue.
We'll go to Nancy Goodban and followed by April Vargas. Nancy, please unmute and begin.
And Elsa.
Hi, this is Nancy Goodban from Redwood City and with Fixon-Samunteo County. Many thanks to Chair Salahourin and all the ICAC commissioners for their hard work and these thoughtful recommendations. Fixon fully agrees with these recommendations that there should be robust community involvement and that should include sworn and civilian staff in the sheriff's office, whichever way you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
We'll now go to April Vargas. April, please unmute and begin. We'll now go to April Vargas, April, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Board and staff, I'm, I'm April Vargas, I live in Montero and I want to add my comments about what a well-written, clear, understandable and um, common sense recommendations that ICAC has made, people who took, have taken on this work are very serious about what they're doing and are always mindful that they are representing the entire community and everyone in the county. I know the Board shares that sense of responsibility and I encourage you to follow these recommendations because I believe that the public will feel more comfortable with the process when it can be explained in such a clear, understandable manner and that everyone knows that there will be an opportunity for outreach and for their comments to be heard, so thanks again to ICAC.
Thank you, Mr. President, we do have one more speaker card from chambers for Elsa Schaefer.
Yes, please, Elsa, come on up.
Thank you so much for that special dispensation, um, apologies that I was in concrete and couldn't speak before when I wasn't here, um, I, I would like to also commend ICAC, which each of you helped fill positions for, I've been to a few of those meetings, I, I cannot um, um, walk away without noting that, that each one of those people adds so much, I think, and has different vantage points, but is so dedicated and so adamant in a lot of what they do say and the perspectives from which they come. Um, I, I wish everyone who has spoken and everyone in the room could go to a few of those meetings because they are not, they're just fabulous. Um, I, I would like to, in, in hearing what Kalima Salahudin presented, to try to have the Board use that as a template in a way for the very little time, the just a few weeks you have left and I, in my book, that was doing homework for everybody else, um, but to be able to, uh, in the next few weeks, to take this remaining part of the thirty days, to even appoint an interim person so that you don't, you aren't living with and that the, the sheriff's office isn't living with someone who was appointed by the person you just fired, I think creating that culture change as soon as you can to create stability is very important, thank you.
Thank you. No more comments, Mr. President.
Great, uh, thank you so much, I just want to thank again, um, ICAC, um, this was um, a presentation, discussion item, so there is no action taken. Uh, colleagues, uh, before we move to item nine, I'm going to give a, a five-minute bio break, I've heard from some of the members and so, um, with that, we'll adjourn and be back in, um, five minutes, excuse me, we'll, I'll recess and we'll be back in five minutes, thank you.
The time is now eleven fifty-seven AM and the Board is in recess. Okay, the time is twelve oh-three PM and all supervisors are present, we may resume the meeting.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam Clerk, you do such a, an excellent job, thank you. Um, we're now on, um, item nine, uh, discussion is of options to fill the vacancy in the office of the sheriff as required by section four-one-five of the uh, county charter. Um, Mr. Nibblin, can you provide a brief overview of what the charter or authorities say about this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about what section four-fifteen says, uh, about the Board's options with respect to filling a vacancy in the office of sheriff and to, I, I think additionally and maybe um, equally importantly, have an opportunity to hear from the Board, uh, the Board's perspectives with respect to um, kind of the uh, information that they might need or the support that they may, they may need from staff in order to uh, move this process forward in whatever way it is ultimately the Board wants to move the process forward, we want to make sure that we are working in the right direction to make sure you have the tools you need to um, to make the decision because as been noted in uh, in prior presentations, the time is, uh, is short. Uh, the section four-fifteen of the Samantao County Charter provides the Board with essentially two um, options in the case of a vacancy in any elected office other than the office of supervisor and that is, uh, within a thirty-day period, do one of two things, either make an appointment or call a special election. Uh, the um, in either event, the appointment or the special election is for the balance of the term of the office that's been vacated, so I think that's an important um, thing to note and again, uh, as uh, somebody had been, had noted, we're already a week into uh, the timeframe, that thirty-day timeframe, the Board, the Board voted on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five to remove the sheriff and thus, uh, the Board has until, according to our day count, and I had one of my colleagues double-check this, we have until uh, November thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five to do one of the two things that uh, I was just noting, either appoint or call a special election. If a special election were to be called, there's a timeframe uh, for the actual conducting of that special election, the special election under the charter uh, needs to be held not less than a hundred and two days nor more than a hundred and thirty-one days from the date of order calling the election, except that it may be held on an election date that's regularly established by general law, if that date falls within two hundred and seventy days from the order calling the special election, so to break that into standard English, um, if there are already dates that the law, you know, provides as a election dates, then uh, those, uh, you know, the election could be passed, uh, could be pushed past the hundred and thirty-one days to, to that date and so in this case, we could be talking about uh, April fourteenth of twenty twenty-six or June second of twenty twenty-six, as you all know, the uh, June second date is a, uh, is the uh, primary election date that's set by state law, so um, at a high level, that's, that's kind of where we're at, um, I've got more granularity to share insofar as it's responsive to your questions, but I guess I'll hold off and, and let you all, uh, let us know how you'd like to support you in this conversation.
Uh, does anyone have any comments or, uh, comments? Okay, Vice President Corzo.
Thank you, um, I, I, I believe that as a Board, we should really, really carefully consider a variety of factors, uh, not limited to, but just off the top of my head right now, risk, timeline, cost, uh, potential for community engagement, um, the input from our sheriff's office staff, input from um, ICAC, input from the community, we, we have, like, there are different roads we could go down based on the different options we have and those would be different timelines and each of those timelines, I think, comes with different risk, different cost, et cetera, and until we have all of that information before us, I think it's uh, premature to, to, um, to vote on this. We have another week before uh, the commitment that we made to uh, the judge in terms of, you know, taking an action, so we have at least another week before we have to make a decision and um, and then, you know, based on the path we would take, we would then um, have other timelines to consider, um, but I do think that it's really, this is going to be probably one of the most important actions that this Board takes and I know that this county has had a practice of appointing sheriffs in the past for different situations and that has been at times um, seen by the community as not being responsive to what the community wants, um, I think we have a different uh, situation before us and um, we have to be really thoughtful about it. Um, I also think that, you know, with the reality of the federal administration right now, this is a really sensitive time for our community and frankly, I personally feel a lot of pressure to make sure that we are protecting our undocumented community because they are very, very vulnerable right now, um, and who we have or when we have someone to fill the role of sheriff in this county is going to be really critical and so, um, I, I'll share that, I do have further thoughts, but I want to hear um, from the rest of our Board because I don't think we should be making this decision rashly, I think we need to be calm, collected and, and very uh, logical about what is really the best way for us to proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, Supervisor Corzo's uh, comments, uh, you know, prompted me to, to realize I've been a little remiss in, in my introductory comments, this is an informational item and for, in fact, the Board cannot take action today, um, so to your, to your point, I, um, I should have stated that at the outset.
All right, are there any um, additional questions, comments?
I have a, a question, Mr. President, uh, the, could you provide us, Mr. Nibblin, with the um, restrictions we may have in terms of appointing someone for a short period of time?
Uh, thank you Supervisor, uh, yes, um, the charter provides that the Board has the power to appoint or for that matter to, to elect, but with respect to the appointment power, um, in particular, the Board has the power to appoint, uh, the charter's very clear that the appointment is um, made for the balance of the uh, remaining term of the particular officer who's vacated her office, so, um, so that complicates frankly the issue of an interim appointment, um, at least, uh, at least in the first instance.
So, to, to carry that forward, um, because the Sheriff's Department has not retained a two percent reserve, uh, we have already taken action to require that all contracts be reviewed by the county executive, so from a financial standpoint now, uh, there are some protections in place to make sure that any of the mount, any money that is spent um, has been reviewed by the county executive's office.
Uh, yes Supervisor, I'm aware that the county executive, frankly, working in, in collaboration with our office, we've been in, uh, in frankly, coordination with the sheriff on, on that matter, yes.
So, the other issue then becomes one of um, how the person that is either appointed or elected, but in the interim, uh, would conduct the other functions of the sheriff in terms of um, overseeing the eight hundred employees, uh, making decisions about investigations, promotions and the like, um, do we have any authority to, for instance, um, pause promotions during this period of time?
I, I think the issue of, of course, the Board has always got oversight authority for every elected official in, in the county, I think the issue of how that oversight authority gets exercised in the context of a situation where you've got a vacancy and somebody is, um, in this, let's just be very direct, the undersheriff, um, discharging the responsibilities of the office, office of the sheriff while not himself being the sheriff, I think the issue of how much oversight authority the Board has in that um, context is um, frankly, a little unclear under the law.
Clear under the law because it's never been done before, correct?
It, it is a, it's a rare instance, that's right.
Um, is there an ability to place someone as an overseer?
Um, are, are you talking about in the context, for example, of uh, an inspector general or were you thinking something different from that?
Not necessarily inspector general, but someone that would be embedded in the office during this period of time where they could, you know, kind of assess the ongoing activities of the undersheriff acting as the sheriff.
I think it would be possible for the county executive, for example, to request that the undersheriff, um, work in collaboration with uh, somebody who is placed there to, to, to perform those kind of functions you're describing, um, but again, it's, this is somewhat untested, it's unclear what would happen if we, uh, if we didn't have collaboration and all that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yeah, so, uh, at the outset, I want to say to my colleagues, I realize there's a, a very real probability that we will end up initially at different places and I want to say to you all, I respect at the outset where you may be right now, where you, where you may be at the end of it, so I don't think, I think we're, uh, you know, some of us, and we all have different styles, some of us stake out clear positions in the beginning, some of us don't, and I respect everyone's styles on this, uh, this is going to be a very difficult, uh, excuse me, louder, you can't hear me? I was just, okay, apologies for that, uh, but, um, but nonetheless, um, there are some, some facts here that I want to share with, with you all having done and that is number one, uh, should this Board opt for an election, it is a winner-take-all special election and county council, correct me if I'm wrong, but that means that someone with as low as ten percent of the vote could become sheriff.
I, I do want to note, the charter does say that uh, whoever gets the most votes wins, uh, the election, it doesn't require a majority, um, there's no, there's no process for a, for a runoff, that kind of thing.
The other thing that, uh, then I, and then another fact I want to share, uh, or a potential solution to the issue that you were talking about Supervisor Spear, about appointing someone for an interim time period, while it is true, if we appoint someone for the interim time period, you can't appoint someone sheriff because they become sheriff, but what we, but an option that, and I've researched this with county council, an option that is available to us is to make an appointment of someone to sheriff with the agreement beforehand, that that same day we appoint them, they will sign resignation papers for June, and so in that, in that case, uh, that's consistent with the county charter, they cannot revoke that resignation once signed, we could actually have a person be sheriff until June and then have that election triggered and is that correct, county council?
Uh, yeah, let, let me just break that down, I, I guess I'll say yes at the outset, but let me, to break it down, uh, again, what the law contemplates is that the Board would make a, an appointment to fill the vacancy, um, what the county charter also states is that any elected official is authorized to resign, uh, and the way you do that is by presenting the county executive as clerk of your Board with a signed, uh, written resignation and once you submit that resignation, it's irrevocable, you can't revoke it, the, um, what the law also states is that an elected official can defer their election or their resignation date, the effectiveness of their resignation date, so some, an elected official could resign, um, uh, with a six-month deferment, for example, again, it's irrevocable because that's what the charter provides, so I, I think that's the analytic framework that Supervisor Mueller is, uh, is referring to.
So, uh, so having done that work, that's sort of where I'm thinking, if, if we decide that we want to go with a short-term appointment and election, that would allow us to appoint a sheriff, give them um, nine months or six months, I guess, but try to get the, try to get that set up for June, for a June election, so we don't have the increased costs of a March and we get as many people to vote as possible in that election, uh, especially given that it's a winner-take-all election, uh, but the, but I, uh, but I also frankly, candidly, am not willing to commit today to that either, I'm not going to, I'm not willing to commit either to appointment or election yet, because it is a winner-take-all ten percent, uh, that scares me a little bit, uh, because of what, uh, we have gone through in our sheriff's department and I need more time to think about that and assess all the facts around that, um, I'm going to reach out to others who have been through similar circumstance to find out what it was like to go into a department that has had this type of upheaval and what it took, uh, to really restore it, I don't think the county, well, it's fair to say, uh, this has never been done in the state before, uh, and the crisis is, is unique and I think we owe it to our residents and to, uh, and to the county, really to be, before I commit personally, myself, my style is I want to look at all of the data I can before I make that decision, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Supervisor Mueller, I'm probably with you on and with, um, figuring out how do we get somebody temporarily in the office, but as I sit here and I think about it, I hate the fact that this is an elected position altogether because we don't have control over it, um, I think when I, we've done things with CSAC and other groups, um, I think right now they're even considering the county manager to be in an elected position, I think it's very troubling to make that, um, that finding because then you have somebody who can just win a popularity contest and not have the qualifications, so at the end of the day, how can we ensure that even the people that we're appointing has passed the background checks and have their qualifications to sit in that position, even if they're going to be appointed and I know that, um, in East Palo Alto where the, 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 the chief reports to, uh, the city manager, we have a whole process where we appoint, um, we appoint residents to sit on a panel and it is- have a whole process where we appoint residents to sit on a panel, and it is very community-centric, where everybody has an opportunity to have a voice and talk and meet those individuals who may, will potentially lead in the county. So I need to know more, but what's most important to me right now, how are we ensuring that those who are currently in the sheriff's department are qualified for the role that they could be potentially sitting in?
I think I'm going to defer to the county executive for that question.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we would, they would have to be fully vetted and to ensure that they're qualified. And you're talking about potential individuals who might rise to the level of that office? Yeah, I mean, and I think that, you know, that probably should be conducted in a public vetting session where people would have an opportunity to ask questions. I've seen that, I've participated in that in the past, and I've seen that occur, and I think it's very effective. But they would have to be fully vetted, and, you know, we'd be happy to do that, assist with that opportunity.
No, I think that's something that is important, and I hope my colleagues would agree that that should be the case, you know, if we move forward with appointment. Even for the interim time, we want to make sure that the right person is there.
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Callagie, how long have you been in law enforcement?
I was in law enforcement just three months shy of 30 years.
So you have three months shy of 30 years of police service, is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, I know a lot of county executives throughout the state of California. Is it fair to say that, you know, and you go to different events with peers, conferences, that you're the only one who's probably in law enforcement?
I haven't come across any other county executive that was, had prior experience in law enforcement.
Okay, no, that's really important. Mr. Nibblin, just a question for you. I'm not, you know, convince me that if we go through selecting an interim sheriff, my understanding of the charter is, reading the charter is much different. I believe that the gap within the charter, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not allow someone to be in that interim sheriff role. So let me sort of clarify. So what's at stake here, so for the general public? You're looking at about a three-year position. So for many of you who don't know, the legislature moved forward to extend term limits. So this isn't, this election historically would have taken place on 2026, now it's 2028.
That's correct.
Assure me in confidence that if we were to appoint an interim, that that would stand up legally?
Well, thank you for the question, and I think using this, I think using the term itself kind of highlights the issue, right? The charter does not provide for an interim appointment, and I tried to be very clear about that in my initial remarks. I mean, the charter provides that the board of supervisors either appoints or elects. We had a conversation about the fact that if, you know, people can resign if they choose to. That is the right of an elected official, is that they can resign if they decide that that is the right thing for them. But the board, to be clear, when they make an appointment, they're not making an interim appointment, they are making an appointment. And you may have an individual who tells you, you know, if you appoint me, I intend to resign. But that's not a binding contract, so to speak, under any law that I'm aware of. It's somebody stating their intent. You've appointed somebody for the balance of the term. So I guess that's how I'd respond to your question. And if somebody decided that they didn't want to resign after they told you they would, we as a county would be stuck with that?
So here's where my concern lies. My concern lies is, lies around, and we've seen this in San Francisco with the past mayor there. They had put that person in an interim position, and then that person decided that they wanted to stay and then run. You know, I think I'm governed by what is in the charter. The charter is so, so important, and I believe that whoever that candidate has chosen, if they wanted to run, you just said it, Mr. Nibblin, not my words, they can run.
You're right. It's all, it is all in the charter. Everything we've talked about here is in the charter. I mean, if somebody gives you a resignation after they've been appointed, the other thing that's in the charter is that they can't revoke that resignation. But your point is taken, absolutely, and I wouldn't deign to try to suggest that you're incorrect about, you know, your framing.
Great. Mr. Callagie, can you talk a little bit about your law enforcement work? What, you were a captain, if you could just run me through your background, career-wise?
I started off in the basic academy, worked patrol, became a sergeant, worked narcotics for eight years in gangs, then became a detective sergeant, working robbery homicide, and then at 35, I think, I was promoted to a captain and spent 15 years on the executive team and the last, I think, 10 or 12 as a deputy chief.
With your law enforcement experience, do you think if we move forward in any area, do you think that you could, with your law enforcement experience over 30 years, that you could provide oversight to the department?
I've never contemplated that, but I would imagine I could, just like any other department. I mean, there's strong leadership in the department. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, to me, it would appear, you know, this department, we know, has been through a crisis. You know, one of the things I'd like to understand, John, is that if we were to move forward, could we move forward if we wanted to with the county executive and the interim taking over the department?
I just want to be really clear on the question. Is the question whether or not you could appoint the county executive as the sheriff?
Correct.
I think the answer is yes, probably. There are certain requirements to run for sheriff, and we've, those are set forth in the government code, but I believe that Mr. Callagie almost certainly satisfies the requirements.
So he would stay county executive and sheriff?
Well, that's a slightly different question from the one I was asked.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, we have a person who has all this law enforcement. I'm not saying sheriff, but is there a way to have the county executive in the interim before a special election, or his or her designee manage the department?
Again, one of the things I'm struggling with a little bit is a conversation we had earlier about this notion of an interim appointment and what that would mean and how that will, and how that really isn't a concept that exists, you know, sort of directly in the county charter. The extent to which the county executive could work with the department to provide some oversight, I think that's something that even now I know the county executive is, and his office is done and is doing with the department. But whether or not that would be manifested in a formal appointment, like as an interim sheriff, again, I-
Well, if we decided not to, you know, let's, the formal appointment, we said, you know, the CEO's office has direct oversight of the sheriff. I just, let me just, yeah, go ahead, John. I mean, is that, we could do that? Could we appoint Mike to be the overseer of the sheriff's office?
I'm not familiar with the process for an overseer. I don't believe that the board, that would be creating a position that doesn't exist in law.
Supervisor Mueller.
Well, so the issue I think we get into is that county executive's office doesn't have, the same thing we ran into before, doesn't have the ability to oversee the actual functions of public safety. But the question, if you really wanted to go down, because I did, I mean, I'm candid with you guys, I looked at this angle too. If you really wanted to go down that road, we could, we could ask Mike to become sheriff, then appoint someone to go into the county executive position. I don't know if that's a route that this board would want to go down. It's an option on the table, but that's the only way that, when I looked at that, I thought that could happen. I'm not suggesting that as the option right now, but I'm trying to go ahead and, to the line of questioning that you were giving, Supervisor Canepa, provide you what I think the alternative would be to achieve that end.
Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just want to share, I would strongly oppose going that route. We have, I think, as a community, been divided and told lies, and to play into some of those lies that our county executive has been secretly plotting to overtake the sheriff's office would be a huge misstep. And frankly, I think this is the first time county executive Callagie is hearing about this option. He has a big job already, the sheriff, the role of sheriff is an entirely separate big job, and we don't even know if he's willing. I would be surprised if he was, but I think we need to be really mindful of how we demonstrate transparency and listen to the community and to all stakeholders.
So my only response to that, and I'll just be candid, is, well, I care about narratives and things like that. The only thing that I'm focused on right now is how do we best get the county departments to function in a way that we are delivering our services most effectively? And at the end of the day, I don't, like, I appreciate narratives, but those narratives were false. And the most important thing that I want to remain focused on is how do we make sure we are delivering the services most effectively for this county as residents and move past this moment?
Are there any additional comments? Supervisor Spear.
You know, as some of the people chuckled at the idea of the county executive taking on two roles, I'm reminded that Secretary of State Marco Rubio is also the National Security Advisor and the head of the archives in the federal government right now, which just speaks to the absurdity of the federal government, I might add. But I do think the, we've got to think about the public here. And when the public voted to give, to empower the board to fire the sheriff if one or more causes were confirmed, it didn't also say, and then the board could appoint the next sheriff. And I think if that was included in that measure, it probably wouldn't have passed. I think that the voters really value the fact that they have the power to vote on who is going to serve them as the county sheriff. And I think that we can't lose sight of that as we contemplate whether to appoint or to go to an election. But I do think we do have the controls now over the spending issues and have a level of accountability there that we didn't have before. And the one thing we have to wrestle with is the other functions in the sheriff's office around personnel and the, you know, appropriate use of force and whether or not they are all doing their respective roles.
Are there any comments or questions?
John, so what I'm hearing is that we're going to either appoint, and it doesn't sound like appointing may be an option, but if we go to election, it's not until June. What does the sheriff's office look like between now and that time, that the June timeframe?
Thank you, Supervisor. Yeah, the election, actually, I mean, it's within the board's discretion to a certain extent to determine when an election would take place. I want to be clear on that. The board does have some election dates that would be available in February or March of 2026, if the board wanted to do such a thing. Or alternatively, the board would have the discretion to wait until June to do an election. I would note that if the board were to do an election in February or March, the price tag, as I'm understanding, is something over $3 million, whereas if it was consulted with the June election, it would essentially be free or close to, close to free, because there wouldn't be much incremental additional cost since an election's taking place anyway. But the, to answer your question, in the interim, the undersheriff, the current undersheriff is serving as the undersheriff, discharging the duties of the office of sheriff. So that's the, that's the current, that's the current status pursuant to state laws set forth in the government code.
I just have one other question. And with that, we, does he have the background to do the work for the interim? That's my question. I'm trying to get to the heart of, if we can figure that out as well.
Whether or not he is qualified to, whether he's been cleared and has all the various background, you know, I's dotted, T's crossed, et cetera, that's something I think we need to do a little additional work on. I don't have, I think that's been pretty opaque to date.
So I just want to clarify, I think Supervisor Gochet has come to understand that there's a premise that we are not able to appoint. That's not correct. Can you please clarify that?
I'm sorry, I should have clarified.
But I said, I didn't say that. I was saying that ultimately, it sounds like, you know, we would go towards an election. But it's either, either one-
It's one or the other, absolutely right. I'm sorry, I should be clear on that point.
I see three options before us right now. I see roll with, I shouldn't say roll, can proceed with the current undersheriff and wait for an election with oversight? Appoint a sheriff, ask for their resignation, advance and trust that they will do it immediately upon resignation, and then move to an election? Or just appoint a sheriff? And those are really the three options in front of us. Is that, as you would agree?
I think that, that's the, that's the long and the short of it, yes.
Okay. And so for myself, I'm just, still want to collect all the data around each of those decisions. The recent, I'll be very candid with my colleagues, the, I had, I had thought we were, myself personally, had moved toward appoint a sheriff, ask for resignation, trust they'll do it, move to election. The wrinkle that happened this week that I learned was that it was a winner-take-all election, and someone with a very low margin vote countywide could become sheriff. And that is something I also don't think the voters would have been aware of at the time of Measure A, and I'm not sure that, so there is a reason the state legislature gave the power in circumstances that there is a vacancy for a board to appoint and to use its best wisdom and judgment. And I'm not, and I think if we went to the voters and we said, do you want a sheriff, given everything we've been through, who's elected with 11% of the vote? I'm not, I'm not sure that they would say, yeah, they want that. And so I'm really going to try to, it could be. And so I really want to try to work through that, that's all. But I, it may be well that I end up with, I end up with those who say, let's go ahead and move to an election. I just need to work through that for a while and frankly, go out and talk with the public about it more and see what they think about that.
Yeah, you know, I just want to say a couple of words. You know, I think I've heard and I've seen what I've seen to make a decision. I believe in my, you know, my 25 years of politics, that appointments really don't work. I think at the end of the day, ultimately, we have to have trust in our voters, whether it's a June primary, whether it's a November primary. I mean, that's participatory democracy, giving the ability for someone to cast their ballot. And for me, whether you live in, you know, Daly City or you've lived on the coast, how you cast your vote is extremely, extremely important to the process. And I just don't see us getting around that, to be quite frank with you. We heard from ICAC earlier, we've heard about outreach, we've heard about, you know, getting people involved and engaged. You know, I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. But what I do have an issue, and previous boards have appointed, is that we're appointing someone to a three-year term if we decide to go that route. Under the charter, as it stands right now for the board of supervisors, this would not be permissible. Is that correct, County Attorney Nibblin?
I'm not completely sure. Just a question.
Okay, if you can get back to me on that, that would be-
I was just hoping you could restate the question. I'm not trying to-
So the question is, on a three-year term?
Right.
Do, is that, is a special election triggered, appointment triggered? What happens?
Again, I'm not-
Your question was, are we allowed to appoint someone to a three-year term?
Under the circumstances here, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess, I guess, sorry, let me walk it back. So the board of supervisors, right, there's provision- right? There's provisions within the, the Board of Supervisors, an appointment or a special election if a member leaves this board, correct?
That's, that is true.
What is the provision?
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry for the, for the misunderstanding.
My question wasn't clear.
Yeah. As, as it pertains to members of the Board of Supervisors, you're absolutely right. When you're talking about a term that exceeds, I believe it's two, two years, actually. There's, it's required that it be a special election. I think the appointment, I think the appointment powers are limited in the context of a member of the Board of Supervisors. But those provisions don't apply to other elected officials. But your, your point is taken. If it was a member of the Board of Supervisors and the remainder of the term was more than two years, you wouldn't have the option to appoint.
Correct. My thought on all this, I think, and the data supports this, by appointing someone to a position, you've given them an inherent advantage. And you've given them an advantage through the ballot statement. So let me, let me give you an example. So if, you know, I decide or someone decides to run for sheriff, on their ballot statement, it says that they're the sheriff. That's incumbency, or it'll say appointed. So you're giving that person who is appointed a competitive advantage. To me, in terms of democracy, that's unfair. So if we look at a special election, it's a competitive process. So people have to go to voters. They have to reach out, knock on doors. There's a, a process that I think through the founding of this country has worked, and that's the, the ballot box. And so colleagues, I am, I'm all in on making sure that we have a special election. I will tell you this, because we're in such crisis right now, it's such a, a big deal, that I'm just not landing on the June election. My understanding is that within the charter, Mr. Nivlin, how many days is it? The soonest we can have an election?
The charter provides that a special election shall be held not less than 102 days, nor more than 131 days from the date of the order calling the election. So provided, however, that you can wait up to 270 days if you're consolidating with, or if you're going to hold the election on a, an established election date. In this case, again, we'd be talking about April 14th or perhaps more relevant, June 2nd of 2026.
And so we have a department that is, is reeling. They're in crisis. I think the immediacy of this is so important. Now let's talk a little bit about this issue around the cost of the election, right? The cost of the election that we had on measure A was $2.5 million, correct?
You know, honestly, I'm, I'm not recalling the exact number. I thought it was actually higher than that. But, but I, I would say that, you know, we had the opportunity to consult with Mr. Church's office and he let us know that we'd be talking about $3.2 million as an estimate for an election in February or March of 2026.
So what I'm trying to recognize, and I, I would assume that this whole process has cost tens of millions of dollars. I don't know what the number is. But I think for bringing peace to a department that has gone through so much, it makes sense to me. Those are dollars well spent considering the crisis that we're in. So colleagues, I just, I, I think the immediacy of having an election is important. And this is the cost of democracy and bringing, you know, healing to a department that has gone through so much. And so I don't know, colleagues, if there are any additional comments?
I just have one comment on, on that. So if we're moving and you're, you're being very quick, it takes some resources to stand up a campaign. And March may not be helpful. You may only have those individuals who actually have the resources to stand up a campaign and you leave out those who are going to take a little while to cobble their campaign together. So being mindful of that as well. So not to be, to speed, I want us to do it the right way, not to rush to just get there.
Got it. That's fair. Yes.
So I, I want to appreciate how thoughtful we're being right now and, and just like this discussion. But let me state what I feel is obvious, and that is that our unions that are part of the sheriff's office have not taken any stances on this. They haven't had, I think, fully the opportunity to do so. We need to give them time to have that opportunity and make sure we're not speaking for them. They have unions, they have a voice. And once they have information, which I think has been provided for the most part today, they, they can let us know where they stand. Now, I, I haven't fully, I'm not, I'm not sharing publicly kind of where I'm at fully, but I will tell you this, one of my top priorities, and I hope like people really hear this, is that I believe that this board has to take the responsibility on of making sure that we do not get into a position that other counties are in where their sheriffs, their elected or appointed sheriffs are willingly collaborating with ICE even when they have policies from the Board of Supervisors that doesn't, that tells them they are not supposed to. I do not want our community to be in that situation. There are headlines from Santa Barbara County, San Diego County, and various other counties who are in those positions. And I will fight tooth and nail to make sure that our community is not in that position. I am very concerned that if we allow for that possibility to happen, our community is going to greatly suffer for it. I, it's, it's one of my top priorities. And I think people need to understand the risk. And that is what I mean when I say we need to think about the risks that we could face. Sheriffs in other counties have said they, you know, they will comply with ICE. They, they don't want, they, they will not try to ask ICE to show their faces. We've, we've seen, you know, the state, at the state level, there's been legislation passed that requires ICE to wear identification and to not wear face coverings. There are sheriffs in this state that don't care about that. I don't want us to be in that position. I also, I'll just wrap up by saying right now that this community, the voters, the residents cares about that. Our county is a welcoming county. We have to think about that. We have to think about the possibility of that and we have to prepare for it. Thank you.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah. So I, I, in all transparency, where I land right now on this is, is the middle option. So I'm still trying to weigh between the middle, between appoint a sheriff, ask for a resignation and, and, but right now, if I had to pick between the three, I would appoint a sheriff and ask for the resignation. If, if we can't trust him to resign immediately upon appointment, we really shouldn't be making the appointment. So you want a person of high quality and character. So I would appoint a sheriff with the, with the agreement that that day we're getting a resignation for them for June. And the reason why I would do that is because I am not comfortable moving forward just with oversight with our current circumstance. And I'm not, I want to be real careful in how I, I say this, but I, I, I believe what's needed right now in the sheriff's office at the top level is a change in leadership. Because any decision that will be made at the top level right now can be questioned either direction. And I don't think that is a way that you run a sheriff's office. Especially if you're looking at a nine, you know, six to nine month period. I don't think there is any chance that true healing can start in that fashion where anyone can lob an accusation either way during that time period. And I, and I will say as a rep, who has, I have such a large unincorporated area. I have unincorporated areas that I represent that are now going out and privately contracting security guards. All right? This is a very real to the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of this county. And we are putting, and it's not fair candidly to those who work in the sheriff's department to be in the position that, that everything that's happening above them can be questioned either way. It's just not, it's not appropriate to deliver services, not appropriate environment to work in. And so for that reason, I would opt toward appoint a sheriff, make sure it's a person that we can trust who will resign that day and then move forward toward an election. I would put that election in June. And for the same reasons that, that Supervisor Gochet mentioned, not just though because they need to marshal their resources, but because the community needs to know who they are electing. This is going to be one of the most vital elections in the sheriff's department that I know of and the community, especially because it would be a winner take all election. The community better darn well and be comfortable with who that person is in that vote. And I think it's going to take that amount of time. My, my friend Bob Johnson, the sheriff in Santa Clara County, who I know, fixing, I know you guys love him. Bob was a major underdog in Santa Clara County when he ran. And he spent the time campaigning to get to know the community and he had a big upset down there and he's done a bang up job. And I think you have to give people the opportunity to get out there and get to know the community in this run. And I think that that is the option, that if I had to vote today, that I would, I think it's the option that would most likely pass this board. But I also think it's the best option for those in the sheriff's department and for the community.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments Supervisor Corso? Supervisor Spear?
Are we going to hear from the public at all during this discussion or is this just an internal discussion that's taking place?
We'll go to public comment. We have Supervisor Corso, Supervisor Corso.
I just wanted to ask a technical question. If there were an election in June, would potential candidates be able to move into the county and then file papers even if they have no previous connection to the county?
I, I think the answer to that is as long as they meet the residency requirement at the time they're taking out papers. I think the answer to that is yes.
Okay. I think that's also an important consideration for people to think about. We could be potentially seeing a very crowded field and someone winning the seat at 11% who could potentially have no previous connection to the county, which some people would consider a good thing. Some people would consider a bad thing, but it's something I think we should be mindful of.
Great. You know, Supervisor Mueller, you know, I, I think your, your train of thought is, you know, I'm amenable to it. I would just ask county council, I really want to make sure, and Ray, I can, you know, you've sort of outlined your thoughts and, you know, a June election is, is great, but what I'm extremely concerned about, and I'm sure when we, when we make this appointment, that person will be before us, correct?
I, I, I think you can set any criteria you want with respect to how you do the appointment, who's present, how they're present, et cetera.
I think as a board, it's incumbent on us to create the parameters and boundaries and to be transparent with potential candidates, that this is just an interim position. And, you know, County Council Nivlin, we're, we're, you know, as we, if we move forward in that direction and they come before us, there's nothing that precludes us as board members to ask questions of those candidates on what they plan to do. Is that correct?
I don't think there's anything that would limit your ability to ask questions. Again, I've, I've tried to be very clear with that the charter itself is very specific about what your powers are in the context of a vacancy. You can either appoint or you can call a special election. And the appointment and the special election, both those, both those options are options that contemplate a filling of the remainder of the term. We are, again, in the context of looking at the totality of the charter and other provisions of the charter, recognizing that elected officials or those who hold elected office have the power to resign. So we're, but, but again, I, I think it's important that we all recognize, and I've tried to be very, you know, transparent, that, you know, this is a little bit of an uncharted place where we find ourselves. And, you know, we are, again, I'm attempting to read the totality of the charter in, in harmony for you all. But to answer your question, I think you have every power and every right to ask the questions you think are important as you decide who to appoint, if you decide to appoint.
And in closing, if we wanted to, Mr. Nivlin, within the staff report or with, within the action we take, while it's not in the charter, the board could move forward with an agreement as well, correct? If we, if, if, we could do that within the resolution framework?
I want to be clear. I don't know that you would be able to enforce an agreement in, in court. It's a, it's a situation where, again, you could.
But there's a difference between enforcement, right? And then there, there's a difference in us having, having an agreement. Well, it's not about what's enforceable. Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I understand what you're saying from a legal perspective.
Right.
But if we were to have an agreement built into an attachment and that person was able to sign on and then testify before us, we could do that legally. It may not be enforceable, but you can, you could do that.
I, I think, again, you could have a situation where, yes, you could get an, an agreement on the record, so to speak, a statement on the record. Agreement is kind of a term of art, so I try to be careful about it.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah. I mean, what I literally envisioned in the circumstances, the day of the appointment, the day of the appointment in this, we would have the appointment and then the person would turn and sign the resignation paper for June. We'd literally have it in front of them on that day. Because, and I think, and that would be enforceable because the resignation paper would be signed immediately after the appointment.
Okay. Supervisor Corso?
So just based on this conversation, I'm going to now come out and say that I support an appointment because I am not willing to risk being in another situation that is making headlines for scandal if we get into a situation where someone signs something, but then they change their mind or they want to defer it. I, I just don't, I think the sheriff's office needs stability. We need to take decisive action. We can make a process very transparent, fully focused on the community, focused on what the sheriff's office shares that they need. No one knows more than they do. I, I'm obviously willing to change my position if we hear differently from the unions that are, that represent the sheriff's office. But I'm not willing personally to risk having a sheriff win an election with a tiny margin who is going to potentially collaborate with ICE. It may not happen, but it's a, it's a very real risk. And I don't want our county to, we need to heal from this. We need to move on. We need to focus on progressing, on, on solving problems for our community. And we need to finalize and lead our community through this situation. And I think that's, that's what our job is. So that's, that's my position. But I, I do think we should hear from the public now.
We have public comment. I'm sure we do.
Well, before, I just want to say, I validate Supervisor Corso, I don't, I'm not going to speak against your position. I think, what I'd say is, I still do have, I, I am wrestling with the concern about the fact that such a low percentage could win this election. I have stated where I am right now, but I will, I am still wrestling with that. And that's why I'm glad the vote isn't today because I still need to work through that and maybe come up and maybe try to work with county council's office a way to address that concern. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one comment? Having been in many, many elections over many decades now, I think we are presuming a low potential of a vote for a candidate that in all likelihood will not happen. And I think we have to have confidence in our voters that they're going to recognize where the talent is and, and vote appropriately. So to somehow suggest that we, we just have to have confidence in our voters. And it's their right. And I don't think we should take that away from them.
Okay. To our chorus speaker who needs to exit Zoom in three minutes. That's item 10. Okay. Thank you so much. Can we take public comment?
Sure. I did receive comments that were written, were submitted to the board and also put on the public site. And we do have three speakers from chambers and then we'll go to comments from Zoom. So we'll take those now. Deacon Lauren McCombs, followed by Jen Bulka.
Good? Okay. Good afternoon to all here. My name is Deacon Lauren Patton-McCombs. I'm currently serving at Christ Episcopal Church in Portola Valley in Woodside, member of Peninsula Solidarity Cohort in fixing San Mateo. All I can say as I listen to all of you, we obviously are in a crisis, not just in the sheriff's office, but here, trying to figure this out and make it good. And we, that's what we need to focus on. We support at fixing, appointing an interim sheriff as soon as possible rather than waiting for a special election. Currently, the sheriff's department is in crisis and the public safety and well-being, which you have mentioned, especially my concerns. especially my concerns are about that too. We don't know what the frick is going on and what will happen here, but we know it's coming. You are our elected representatives and your votes represent us. An opportunity by our elected representatives is more democratic than leaving the sheriff's office in the hands of the undersheriff, who is not elected by the voters until possibly June of 2026. The damage has been done. The time to act is now. To close this unfortunate chapter and move forward with a positive change in leadership, I encourage you to appoint an interim sheriff as soon as possible. Thank you for all that you do to serve the county.
Thank you. And we'll go to Jen Bulka.
I just want to say wow, and thank you so much for all your thoughtful considerations. You guys are amazing. This has been an interesting four hours for me. I'm Jen Bulka and I have been a business owner for Special Ed Kids in Redwood City and have lived here for 26 years. Part of what I love about living in San Mateo County is its sanctuary protections. Of course, we all know the ordinances under which law prohibits the sheriff's office, office from cooperating with ICE. Our hope is the newly appointed sheriff or interim person, whatever, will commit to, no matter what pressure they get from the powers that be, these ordinances. The most important oversight during this transaction, during this transition in my community is to ensure transparent reporting and accountability measures are in place. Undocumented immigrants should have, not have to live in fear of taking their kids to school, driving to a job, going to court, to a court appointment. It's our moral obligation to ensure these oversights are in place. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see our chorus speaker on, but I'll keep an eye out for her if she returns. Elsa Schaefer.
Thank you so much, dear board, for the caliber of this discussion and the depth with which you're, um, thinking it all through. The problem in front of you and for the last six-ish months has, has been the culture of the sheriff's office. I think keeping the current leader is the worst option you could allow to continue. Because that person was put in position by the person you just fired. And I'd love, as you're getting public input, I would love to have you start with the unions. The people who brought out into the open how bad that internal situation was. And if you can talk with those people, you will, you will, and, and you can ask names too. You will hear a lot of input to solve the major problem that the whole county's, ah, been, been dealing with. You so need stability. You need somebody ideally whom they know, understand and trust. And also who we could. Measure A gave you the ability to fire that person. If you end up with somebody you think is terrible, it's still in effect. Um, you need to heal right now and have that group heal right now. And you are our elected representatives. I don't feel at all badly about your taking this democracy, just like Congress and what's in the White House right now. Um, but, but we, we, the U.S. have adopted that system. So please don't look at it as so obnoxious to the voters. Uh, and I'm a voter too, for and my family. Thank you so much for this discussion and for your depth.
Thank you, Elsa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any more speaker cards from chambers, so now we'll go to Zoom. This is for item nine. We'll start with Ann, followed by Sabrina. Ann, please proceed.
Last call for speakers on Zoom.
Oh, sure, Mr. President. Ann, before you proceed, I'll to go ahead and now make a last call for speakers at this time. So please go ahead and raise your hand and I'll announce that final name. Item nine, last call made. And the final hand that we will take is for April Vargas. Ann, please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to request that the county sheriff's officers get to nominate a candidate for candidates for sheriff. They need to have confidence in leadership in order to succeed in their jobs. We owe our law enforcement the utmost respect and gratitude. Police officers need to be fully represented and supported. They should choose a leader that best represents them and their values. I don't believe community oversight boards should pick the candidates officers should. The job is hard enough for officers and they deserve our full support and confidence in their ability to do their jobs. They don't need a lot of outside rules to add to the stress of the job. I support our fine men and women in law enforcement 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now go to Sabrina, followed by Sid Young. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name is Sabrina. I come to you as one of the people, Siri Juess, who hold all political power as declared in the California Constitution, Article Two, Section One, and the United States Constitution's Amendments Nine and Ten. These rights are ineligible and written in Article One, Section One of the California Constitution. Each member of the board swore an oath before you entered of the, your respective offices as required by Article Twenty, Section Three of the California Constitution. You are bound by these oaths and written in Article Four of the United States Constitution and Article Three, Section One, states the United States' Constitution as the supreme law of the land. The Board of Supervisors was served notice for the people regarding their maladministration regarding the discharge of the duly elected Sheriff Christina Corpus and her right of due process. The Board of Supervisors were further served affidavits for the people's like, uh, of the people's liberty right to elect and hold officers accountable. These, since these affidavits were unrebutted, they now hold true in the court of record. The board has violated their sworn oath, the rights of the people, in addition to Sheriff Corpus's rights. And unlike any county attorney who believes these actions were correct, the people know they hold all political power and will continue to stand on inherent rights enshrined in our constitution. And we, the people, hold, will hold sworn oaths of the office to which they are bound. This notice is spent in the peace and love of Jesus Christ and that you provide immediate due care by necessity to all those who hold political power, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Sid Young, followed by Nancy Goodman. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I listened to your deliberations and it was quite shocking to me that it could come down to someone winning at 10% of the vote. And I looked up quickly on the voter turnout. Measure A passed with only 24% of the county voting and in a special election. And in the November election, 74% of the, um, uh, turnout voters turned out. So I, if you do end up holding an election for the sheriff, please consider using a consolidated election for the ballot. And, um, not only will it save us money, but you'll get more participants. And, um, of course, the decision is yours, but, um, I would hate to think that, you know, we would get a small turnout and that that person could win by 10%. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Nancy Goodman, followed by X. Nancy, please unmute and begin.
Thank you for such a thoughtful discussion. All of you up there have a tough job right now. I'm Nancy Goodman from Redwood City with Fixon-Santa Mateo County. We do recommend that the board appoint a sheriff rather than waiting for a special election. We also agree, as Supervisor Corso pointed out, and as does the Coalition for a Safe for San Mateo County, that any new sheriff must obey the current county ordinance and current sheriff policy about not cooperating with ICE. And remember, Fixon avoids supporting specific candidates. We focus on the importance of civilian review regardless of the sheriff. But we are individual voters who can individually express our personal opinions. The organization is focused just on systemic change. An appointment is quicker. The sheriff office is in crisis. The captains and employees need a leader who will support them and they need to be part of the discussion. Supervisor Mueller's idea of a short-term appointment with an irrevocable post-dated resignation up until a June election seems to possibly be the best of both worlds. The voters will appreciate having the chance to decide. It is also critical the board and county staff really step up as ICAC asks to communicate this whole thing to the public. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. We'll now go to X, followed by Remy Tan. X, please unmute and begin.
Um, yes, hello. I am adamantly against appointing somebody. Um, Corso says she doesn't want to be, you know, put in the same situation that we are now. However, I'll remind her that she supported, um, Corpus. And I think most of the people on this, uh, board did as well. Um, second, if somebody is appointed, there's three socialists on this board. And so whoever is appointed as sheriff is going to hold those same values. So I'm strictly against it. Um, as far as cooperating with ICE, again, I will plead that you guys cooperate to remove rapists, murderers and pedophiles. It's an 80/20 issue despite with Corso claims. Um, it's really vile to think that we cannot protect citizens from this type of, um, of danger. Um, but it just shows the socialist tendency she has. And we need to move forward with a sheriff that's going to support all citizens and not just her special agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now go to Remy Tan, followed by April Vargas. Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hello, I'm Remy Tan, architect and resident of Pacifica. Um, I agree with, uh, our, our, our Supervisor Ray Mueller's idea of having a interim sheriff that's appointed by the board and, uh, would, would resign and not run. And then we could have a fair election in June. I agree with the other speaker. We need to have it on a, uh, a general consolidated election and not a special election due to low turnout. And to, um, address the issue that Supervisor Mueller brought up about the 10%, um, uh, you know, if in a, because it's a winner take all. I think the county really needs to look at during a, um, ranked choice voting. Um, we live near San Francisco and I'm very familiar with that ranked choice voting method with instant runoff. And it saves that county a lot of money because they only have one election. Uh, the election is decided very fairly. Uh, because people can rank their choice and then it, it does, the computer automatically calculates the votes. And then, uh, you end up with a winner that has over 50%. And everybody's got to say there are no wasted votes and that sort of thing. So I think the county really needs to go to ranked choice voting, not for the, only for the sheriff, probably for all the other positions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to April Vargas and I have an additional written comment. April, please unmute and begin.
Hi, um, I appreciate the conversation and all of the options that have been put, put out. Um, I think that ultimately the best way to do this would be a interim appointment. And then with an election in a historically bigger turnout election time. Um, however, um, as someone mentioned, and I remembered, um, Ed Lee had agreed not to run for San Francisco, um, mayor when he was appointed and then he changed his mind. So, um, I think we're all aware that no matter how carefully we think about, uh, what we want to do and what the best the solution could be, there's always some unknown factors that could enter in. But to leaderson who's currently sheriff there for six more months, I don't think is a good idea. And then I just want to say, um, that we appreciate the work that all the board does. And I find it personally disappointing that people can come on here without giving their name and be so disrespectful to all of you. Uh, the majority of people in this county appreciate what you're doing, even when we don't always agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. President, we did receive one written comment. I'll go ahead and read now from Beth von Amster.
My name is Beth von Amster and I am co-chair of the ACLU SMC chapter. As you deliberate about how to fill the sheriff vacancy, I urge you to please center the ultimate goal of protecting the safety of all county residents. That means ensuring that any serious candidate for a new sheriff is an immigrant rights champion who embraces our current laws and robust policy protections that free our community from entanglement with federal immigration authorities. The U.S. president threatens the same invasion of troops on our local streets as we've seen in D.C., L.A., Chicago and elsewhere. Federal agents are terrorizing and dehumanizing anyone they see as other, including U.S. citizens and legal residents. We cannot give an inch to aiding those lawless forces. There has never been a more important time for us to stand united in protecting ourselves and neighbors. It is imperative to our collective safety that you select a process that favors a new sheriff who unabashedly, unwaveringly and courageously, a protector of every county resident, regardless of birthplace or immigration status. We can't afford to have any public official in this county, especially at its highest law enforcement official, waiver on this issue. The very fabric of our community depends on it. And that ends public comment.
Um, thank you very much. Are there any, um, final, uh, comments, uh, to the board? Or any direction, direction for staff? Any additional direction? Yes, Supervisor Corso.
I'd like to, um, request that our board, uh, direct our, um, county leadership to consider the ICAC's recommendations to make sure we have time to have official positions from the sheriff's office unions. And, um, maybe we, we come back in a week and, and continue to have this conversation. I also, uh, want to, um, just quickly address, uh, some of the public comments and say that I, my understanding of the Brown Act is that when we have, uh, members of the public that are, uh, consistently, uh, sharing personal attacks, that, um, our president does have the discretion to shut that down. And, um, he did previously so request that, um, that be consistent.
Through the county attorney, um, can you speak to Supervisor Corso's last comment?
Generally, um, the Brown Act, uh, doesn't, um, doesn't really contemplate, uh, you know, the ability to shut down speakers, uh, who are not otherwise engaging in, um, you know, sort of comments that are disruptive of the meeting. I guess that's kind of the standard that, so insofar Supervisor Corso is referring to disruptive comments. Certainly the board has every, uh, the board president has every power to maintain the order of a meeting. But generally speaking, caustic comments or comments that are inconsiderate or that, uh, you know, sort of run afoul of ordinary civility, if they aren't themselves disruptive or fighting words or other, you know, lying outside the, the otherwise, you know, you know, applicable protections for, uh, First Amendment speech. We, there are limits to our ability to, to stop those kinds of comments, but, uh, they're certainly contrary to the, the civility that we as a county are, you know, ordinarily trying to, to cultivate.
Thank you for the clarification, um, Mr. Niblin. Are there any additional, um, comments?
Uh, Mr. President, can I clarify? It sounded like there was a, a request that we, um, do some work and, and come back to the board. Uh, it, it, on a cycle that wouldn't be sort of an ordinary board meeting cycle. And I was curious, I want to make sure that if that was the direction of the board, we want to make sure that we have clearer guidance from you as to what you'd like to have happen there.
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, if it's okay with our colleagues, um, I think next week is fine, um, and us taking this up. You know, I just want to be very clear, um, in, in sort of where I'm landing in this direction. I think, um, and I know Supervisor Mueller hasn't made a final decision, but I do think it's rational, um, as we move forward to look at, uh, the interim. Uh, in the meantime, I'd like to see, uh, Mr. Niblin, you really address the concern about if we make the appointment, that the person is not able to run. And then, and then finally, I think, um, you know, the June election is, is, is appropriate. I know there have been issues about people saying it's, you know, it's going to cost, um, cost money. Um, but I think the, the art of political compromise is important in such a matter like this. And I'm not, um, wedded, uh, to, to my position, but really looking at the big picture of this, um, it probably does make sense to have the interim and then it probably does make sense for us to move forward, um, in June. So I would ask staff, um, I think that's pretty, uh, pretty clear, uh, direction. But that's the way I see, uh, this board moving, uh, or my opinion of how the board should be moving forward. Supervisor, of course, Supervisor Spears.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would recommend that we schedule a session in which we will hear from the public, and that would be the only item on the agenda, and hear from the public as to what their preferences are moving forward. And then be in a position to, on the next scheduled board meeting, make the decision. So if we could find a date next week to have a session exclusively for the purpose of hearing from the public and then finally make the, the decision at our next board meeting.
So I'm just going to ask one, and I, I love that Supervisor Spear, the only thing I'd ask, if my colleagues can do it at night. So I think there's a lot of people who'd want to come in the evening.
It's a good idea, actually.
So if we could do it in the evening. And then to share with my colleagues, after hearing our discussions today, what I'd say to Supervisor Kenab is, I'm at 99%.
Yeah.
I think this is the best compromise. I think this is the best compromise we're going to get, is 99% with an interim with resignation and then election. I reserve that 1% just because I need to, still need to work through a couple of those things. But, but I do appreciate, I want to say to you all, this is a tough topic. I appreciate everyone working together on this. So thank you.
Can I make that as a motion?
Can I ask one question?
So we're going to hear from the public. When are we going to hear from the DA?
Well, we should hear from them at the same time.
They'll be included in the public comments.
Perhaps I could open the meeting with any presentation you all want me to offer. And maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe next Tuesday night would work. We can always check.
We'll look at that, see if next Tuesday night works.
Okay. So Supervisor Spear, do you want to restate what you?
So I would, I am making a motion that on Tuesday, October 28th, at 6:00 or 7:00 p.m., to be determined, that the board meet for the purpose of taking public comment and comment from the sheriff's deputies as to what process we should pursue. And subsequently, the board would make its final decision at the next scheduled board meeting, which is scheduled for November 4th. Is that right? November 4th.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes, but I thought we couldn't make a motion on this because it's informational.
This is just direction to staff. I mean, it's being done in the form of a formal motion. And of course, we do whatever you told us anyway, with or without a motion, but this is a little clearer.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. I also want to say to my colleagues, I won't make it a meeting, but I do intend to do a listening session on the coast at my office next week. I think for those who can't come this far, I think it's appropriate, so I'll work with my staff to do that.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item 10. Colleagues, what I'd like to do in light of the time is to ask for a continuance on item 10 to the next meeting. That's my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear? Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes to continue the item.
All right. We're now on to item 11 on our agenda. It's the presentation of our service rewards. This item is set for 3:00 p.m. at the Regional Operations Center. We look forward to honoring our county employee colleagues later this afternoon. We're now on to item 12. It's now time to move to the regular agenda. There are five items on the regular agenda. We'll start with item 12, which is a Measure K item, authorizing agreement with Samaritan House to purchase and distribute holiday and emergency food. This is brought to us by Supervisor Spear?
Or Claire Cunningham?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors, esteemed colleagues, and members of the public. I'm Claire Cunningham. I'm the Director of the Human Services Agency, and I'm here today to request supplemental funding for our eight core service agencies to purchase food for the most vulnerable residents in San Mateo County. The agreement before you would provide $130,000 for Samaritan House to purchase holiday proteins such as turkey, chicken, and ham for Thanksgiving and the winter holidays. And Samaritan House would then distribute the holiday proteins to the other core service agencies in the county. The remaining $758,368 would be distributed among the cores to purchase food to supplement what they receive from Second Harvest Food Bank and distribute to the community, enabling them to better meet the nutrition needs of their neighborhoods that they serve. This funding couldn't come at a more critical time. As you know, there are several significant policy changes going into effect soon that will result in CalFresh recipients receiving less money for food, more CalFresh recipients being required to work to keep their benefits, and more lawfully present residents who are immigrants who will no longer qualify for CalFresh benefits. Here in San Mateo County, we anticipate that approximately 3,700 individuals will lose their CalFresh benefits after three months if they fail or are unable to comply with the new work requirements, and that 588 individuals will lose CalFresh benefits due to changes in immigrant eligibility. And it's also important to keep in mind that the average monthly CalFresh benefit amount per household is $288 per month, which purchases far less food these days due to high costs and inflation. These changes to the social safety net would be challenging enough, but the federal government shutdown adds an especially devastating wrinkle because the people who rely on nutrition assistance will likely not receive their benefits in November or until the federal shutdown ends. CalFresh benefits are 100% federally funded, and they flow directly from the United States Treasury to the state's EBT vendor. CalFresh assistance dollars never pass through the state or the county. And while the state is exploring options, it isn't operationally feasible for them to advance assistance to recipients in November, nor does the state currently have access to general fund dollars that would cover over $1 billion in CalFresh benefits per month. All of this means that it's time for us as a community to come together to help make sure that our neighbors don't go hungry. And I deeply appreciate your board's consideration of this funding request, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for your great efforts on our behalf. I would just like to underscore, this is precisely why Measure K is important and how we should use it. In my conversations with the core agencies and with the food bank, they are feeling it. We have a dire situation at hand. The addition of 130,000 that will be allocated for holiday protein is very important. And what we do know is that there are as many people seeking food at our various core agencies and through the food bank as during COVID. So those numbers have not receded. And as of November 1st, because of the shutdown, there will not be any money put in the EBT cards of those that are eligible for food stamps known as CalFresh. So starting November 1st, they have no money for food. And that is shameful in a country like ours. We are the richest county in California, and we have 30,000 kids that we know that are living in poverty and probably going to go hungry come November 1st. So getting this money out as swiftly as we can is critical to our ability to say that we have provided to the least among us and the most in need.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Sorry, I just finished chewing this because I'm hungry. Let me say that our core agencies are very, very worthy of this additional funding. And I actually believe that the need has increased since the pandemic. So it's not just, it's exceeded the need during pandemic, during the pandemic. And I think this is very, very timely, and I'm really grateful Supervisor Spear has led on this because we are seeing headlines of, you know, a potential National Guard and militarized force coming into the area. And if that does happen, people will not be going out to work. People will be staying home. They won't have income, and the need will only increase. So this is very timely, and I'm fully in support of it. Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah, I do want to thank Supervisor Spear for her leadership, and I want to use the moment too. Supervisor Spear kindly shared some information with me about this, about what's occurring in our county versus other counties. And I think at this time, it's really important to make a statement. One of the things that I loved about this is that Supervisor Spear and her work with you all really pointed these dollars towards San Mateo County in a way that they would reach San Mateo County residents. But there is this other issue that's taking place where some of the providers who typically provide to San Mateo County residents, Second Harvest Food Bank and others, really are not seeing the amount of regional support, both from the private sector and frankly from the public sector. San Mateo County gives significantly more support than Santa Clara County to this effort. And I think that's something that we really need to let the private sector know, is that Second Harvest Food Bank in Santa Clara County really needs private sector support. All of those tech companies right now who have started to move their money away from local support programs, we really need them to look at Second Harvest Food Bank at this time and what the need is regionally. We're trying, we're stepping forward today to supplement that, but there is a much bigger crisis happening in our county and regionally in Santa Clara County and those surrounding us. And so, and we need, frankly, we need Santa Clara County to step up more too. But we really need the tech, our industry partners to step into that void as well.
If I may add, you know, what I think is lost to some in the community, 80% of the money that Second Harvest Food Bank receives is from individual donations, 10% from government. So it's a real call to action for all of us in our districts, I think, to elevate this issue and encourage our generous community people to give to our core agencies because they can make sure the money is going to get into the hands of those that need it most.
All right. Yes.
I just want to say, Supervisor Spear, thank you for leading with this. We know how important it is during COVID. You know, we were out there providing meals to the community on a daily basis through the help of some of like Boys and Girls Club and others. We know that Second Harvest is doing their best and just cannot fill the gap right now. So to be able to fill this gap to ensure that protein is on the table is important. The cost of living alone is ridiculous. I don't know how people can go in and buy groceries anymore because things are just way too expensive. So hope that we can do more of this to help community members. And as this federal shutdown continues to loom, there are federal workers who are not getting paid checks, who cannot only, that can't put food on the table or ensure that their rents and mortgages are paid. So keeping everybody in mind, the cost of living is too damn high. Thank you.
All right. Do we have public comment?
I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll call for comments on Zoom. This is for item number 12, for the agreement with Samaritan House. We do have two hands raised, so I'll call Ann, and then we'll make a final call for speakers. Ann, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I am in full agreement with what you are doing here. And I just want to point out that another vulnerable population is, are the elderly. They are also in dire need of nutritional support, and oftentimes their health care is directly linked to this. So who knew I would be in full support of what you're doing here, but yes, I am, and I thank you for this. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Final call for raised hands? Okay, our last speaker will be Remy Tan. Sid Young, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I just had a little thought. There's a lot of people on next door here on the coast side. I live in Moss Beach, but up and down the coast side, people give away fresh produce off their trees. And there's a lot of it this time of year. I'm wondering if there's a suggestion of how it could be collected and given to the food banks. Is there anyone that would know, especially the person giving the presentation? Would that be of help? Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Remy Tan, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Supervisor Spear, I love this idea. This is a great, great thing. We need to backfill the government, the federal government, and do a call out for all the wealthy people in this county to donate to Second Bank. And then the folks that are out of work or, you know, because of this thing, you know, they can also volunteer and help, you know, collect, you know, the Second Harvest food from the grocery stores and the restaurants, and so we have more food on the table. So take a village and, you know, this is something that Habitat for Humanity does, you know, a lot of the people who get the houses, they actually help build the houses. And, you know, that's always been a fantastic program, and, you know, Jimmy Carter really did a lot for that program. Thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Spear, back to you.
I'd like to move this item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we're on to item 13. It's a public hearing in consideration of a coastal development permit establishing no parking in any time zone on Carlos Street in unincorporated Moss Beach. This brought, item is brought to us by Public Works and Planning and Building. Mr. Monowitz.
Good afternoon, President Canepa, supervisors, Mr. Niblin, and Ms. Rodriguez. Yes, item 13 is a joint proposal from Planning and Building and Public Works. It consists of a recommendation to approve a coastal development permit as well as a resolution to establish a no parking zone along the length of Carlos. Okay, so the proposal to prohibit parking along Carlos Street is in response to a request from the Coastside Fire Protection District, who has stated that Carlos Street serves as a critical response route for emergency vehicles, and that's to the surrounding community, and that the proposed parking restriction is essential to maintaining reliable fire and life safety access during construction of the Cypress Point project as well as for ongoing community protection. Letter from Fire Chief Wilson expressing support of the project is just being distributed to you now. As the supervisors may recall, Cypress Point is a 71-unit, 100% affordable housing project that was approved by the board in March of 2024. While Coastside Fire has requested that the parking restrictions be installed prior to the construction of this project, it's important to note that these restrictions are not required solely to serve the Cypress Point project and rather are intended to provide emergency access to the existing residential community adjacent to the project, as the network of existing roads in this neighborhood do not provide 20 feet of unobstructed access as called for by the fire code. Restricting parking on Carlos Street will not have a significant impact on the neighborhood as it is the least used for parking by the existing residents as compared to other streets in the neighborhood. So in order to approve the coastal development permit, the board must find that the proposed parking restrictions are consistent with the provisions of the county's local coastal program. The project complies with these requirements because the restrictions will not impede public access to or along the coast. Due to its distance from the coastline, Carlos Street is not used by the public for coastal access parking. It does, however, provide an important lateral coastal access route for bicyclists and pedestrians traveling north and south along the coast who are seeking an alternative to State Route 1. Eliminating parking on Carlos Street will enhance the experience of pedestrians and cyclists that frequently use it. Another important LCP consideration is the protection of visual resources. The small size of the no parking signs will not have a significant impact on the coastal views available along Carlos Street, and the absence of parked cars will enhance these I'd also like to point out that the existing fire station number 44 in Moss Beach is located very close to the Cypress Point project, and that the driveway too and the new roads within the Cypress Point project will be constructed in a manner consistent with fire code requirements. Notwithstanding the fact that there is sufficient emergency access to the project site from Station 44, Coastside Fire has identified the need for the parking restrictions to address a situation where Station 44 personnel may be occupied on another call and/or a multi-station response is required to respond to an emergency within this existing neighborhood. The next closest station is in El Granada, and Coastside Fire has identified Carlos Street as the preferred route for emergency vehicles coming from the south. So these next slides show the location of the no parking zone. It starts where Carlos Street intersects- It starts where Carlos Street intersects with Ethel Door at the south. This is just north of the commercial strip on Carlos Street and it continues north for the entire length of Carlos Street until it intersects with Highway 1. The total length of the no parking zone is approximately one half mile and it's estimated that a total of 30 to 35 signs will be, need to be installed. So this brings me to the staff recommendation, but before I conclude my presentation, I'd like to briefly respond to some of the comments we've received regarding this item. These include a letter from an existing Moss Beach resident, Mr. Epstein, as well as letters from the Midcoast Community Council, Sid Young and Jill Grant. Mr. Epstein suggests that Stetson Street provides an alternative route to the neighborhood that makes the no parking proposal on Carlos Street unnecessary. Unfortunately, Stetson Street does not provide the minimum unobstructed width of 20 feet when cars are parked on that street and eliminating parking along Stetson would have a greater impact on the community due to the greater number of residents that use it for parking as compared to Carlos Street. Mr. Epstein also expresses concern that the proposed parking restrictions will interfere with the ability of service providers to park and access the eight residences that currently have driveways on Carlos. Based on staff's observations, all of these driveways have sufficient length and in some cases width to allow service vehicles to park on the existing driveways as opposed to on Carlos Street. Mr. Epstein's request that these residents be provided with a parking permit cannot be granted as it would negate the purpose of maintaining sufficient emergency access along Carlos. The letter from the Midcoast Community Council expresses similar concerns as Mr. Epstein and accurately points out that the draft environmental impact report prepared for the project did not identify the need for such parking restrictions. The letter from Jill Grant makes the same observation and it's important to note that the need to establish these restrictions was not addressed by the draft environmental impact report because it was only recently identified as a requirement by Coastside Fire. And this was during their review of the building permit applications that had been submitted to construct the project. The fact that the draft environmental impact report did not identify this need does not raise a conflict with the California Environmental Quality Act as the project became exempt from CEQA in 2024 due to the passage of CEQA amendments that exempt certain qualifying affordable housing projects such as Cypress Point. The Midcoast Community Council also encourages the consideration of alternatives to the installation of signs such as painting curbs and/or, curbs and/or the pavement shoulder red. There are no curbs currently on Carlos Street that could be painted red and painting the shoulder of the street would require regular maintenance by the Department of Public Works, whereas the installation of signs will require little to no maintenance once installed. As I previously indicated, the signs will not detract from the scenic qualities of the area. The letter submitted by Sid Young expresses support for the no parking signs, but suggests that MidPen Housing rather than the county fund their installation. Given that these signs are intended to provide sufficient emergency access to the entire neighborhood, not just the Cypress Point site, staff believes that it's appropriate for the county to fund their installation. With that, staff recommends approval of the coastal development permit and the resolution establishing the no parking zone. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Monowitz? All right, there's a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Do I have unanimous consent?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open. I'll ask the clerk to see if there's anyone who wishes to be heard at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did receive written comments which were emailed to the board and provided on the public website. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so just taking a look out, I don't see any comments here. So we'll go ahead and take comments from Zoom at this time. We have five hands raised and I'll make a final call after the first comment.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Sid Young, followed by Ann. Sid, please raise your, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I did send a letter with lots of photographs. When Steve Monowitz came to the Midcoast Community Council, he made a big point of calling Carlos Street the jewel in the crown of the coastal trail. However, they haven't funded the coastal trail and there's not even a bike trail in Moss Beach or Montero. The first part of the bike trail starts in El Granada, the Coronado Lights. So the people that are going to occupy MidPen, they're going to park all along Carlos Street. So that's why I'm in favor of the signs. However, I would rather see the $30,000 be put for a sidewalk and a bike path on Carlos Street and not have the, all those signs be placed in the area where maybe you're going to have to uproot them later and put the bike path in whenever you get the funding. Connect the Coastside was supposed to fund it. It still means unfunded. So you're not thinking at all about the existing neighbors. You're just giving money to MidPen to fund a project that doesn't even have residents yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Ann, followed by Remy Tan. Ann, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Carlos Street is too narrow to allow for the safe passage of fire trucks. Not allowing parking will not help if cars are on the road on both sides and need to pull over for emergency vehicles. The road needs to be widened in order to be safe. Until the widening of the road is complete, no construction should be allowed at the site of the proposed Cypress Point development. Combustible materials will be on site that could cause fire, not only at the site, but can easily spread into the surrounding neighborhood. Evacuation would be hindered for residents as there are no traffic lights. There is a potential for fire to spread like it did in Altadena or Paradise. The citizens of Moss Beach are at great risk. All road widening and improvements need to be in place prior to building anything as there is no hospital service available to residents. Please do not put residents in the neighborhood at risk of harm or even death. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll make a final call for raised hands in Zoom for this item. Final call has been made. The last three speakers will be Remy Tan, Lawrence Flath and Mark Epstein. Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hello and Remy Tan up in here in Pacifica. Fully support the no parking. The fire department has determined that they need the 20 feet to fight fires, both, you know, on the new development as well as the existing neighborhoods. So that's basically non-negotiable because we want to make sure everybody's protected. But the concerns about the parking does bring up, you know, issues that, you know, our SAM Trans has been cut and cut along the coast side and, you know, hope the supervisors can work with SAM Trans using some of this new driverless technology to bring, you know, to bring low-cost shuttle buses back in, into the coast side. So people are less car dependent and then, you know, visitors come, they can come by, you know, transit instead of cars and then that will alleviate the parking issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to our last speaker, Mark Epstein. Apologies, actually. Now we have Lawrence Flath. Please unmute and begin.
Hi, thanks, thanks a lot. Our family has been living on Carlos Street for nearly 20 years and because of this proposal, we're not even going to be able to park in front of our own house. I'm a bit confused. The police and the fire departments are indicating that Carlos isn't safe as it stands yet. As is my understanding, the plan is to route 50-plus commuting cars twice a day from Midpen apartment complex up and down that very same street. I want to be clear that I'm not a NIMBY or resist density person. I'm totally cool with people having the housing for folks like this in our neighborhood, but having this much traffic on what is effectively a one-lane residential street, that's a recipe for head-on collisions as well as the hitting of both pedestrians and kids on bikes who frequent this section of Carlos. No parking signs aren't going to change that. These issues could be avoided by providing a direct route to Highway 1 for both the emergency vehicles and the Cypress Point residents, literally just continuing the passages from those facilities to another 40 feet to the west. Thanks.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mark Epstein. Please unmute and begin.
Yes, hello. Thank you very much. Can you hear me at this point?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate what all of you have gone through today. It's been a long day. You deal with a lot of issues. This one is very personal. I live on Carlos Street and as far as I'm concerned, this is a solution looking for a problem. There is no restricted access for the emergency vehicles on Carlos Street. There has never been a lack of access. There is very little parking that takes place on Carlos Street, none on the street, only sometimes on the shoulder. There are service providers and necessary people who park there as needed. This project, making it a no parking zone, has very little benefit to the community because there are alternative routes available for emergency vehicles. There is significant impact, however, to us very few residents who live on Carlos Street and who have been here for a long time. I, I cannot imagine how you would find or how the fire department would find Carlos Street appropriate if they say they need a 20-foot road. Carlos Street is not 20 feet wide on any part of its length. This is, there's more room on Stetson Street even with parked cars and now you want to deny us the ability to park right across from our own houses. It's just very unreasonable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That's everyone who wanted to be heard. With unanimous consent, we will close the public hearing. Do I have unanimous consent? We are back to the board for any discussion.
So yeah, this is, thank you Supervisor Canepa. So I just wanted to indicate, it's my understanding, I want to make sure it's clear, Mr. Monowitz, this is actually being required by the Coastside Fire Protection District. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it's a emergency, it's a health and safety issue that's required by the Coastside Fire Protection District, right?
That's correct.
All right. That being said, and you can speak to it, I constantly say, when are we going to get those, get those improvements to Highway 1? Because I do believe that the improvements to Highway 1 through Caltrans are going to address a lot of these issues.
Yes, thank you Supervisor. We are in the third phase of obtaining the grants and doing the specific construction plans that are required to move that project forward. It's still many years out, but we are working as rapidly as we can to progress the project, working with Caltrans, the community and potential funding sources for the project.
All right. And it's going to take some time to actually construct Cypress Point even after we do this, right?
That's correct.
All right. So I'm going to continue to push to make, to get those Caltrans improvements to be done at the time that Cypress Point actually opens up. And so I want to make sure the community knows I am pushing for that to happen. And I've indicated that before to the board prior at the time that it was approved, that we may be called on as a board actually to make financial contribution to get that project, that transportation improvement project done. The board at that time said, yeah, you know, we understood that. That's where we are today. So thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the resolution on the coastal development permit?
To the chair, I just have one question because we've heard from residents as well. What happens to those residents who can no longer park in front of their homes? Is that, is there a solution or how do we help them as well? I don't want that going on.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, you know, our observations of the eight residences that obtain access off of Carlos all have driveways of sufficient length and in some cases sufficient width to accommodate their parking needs on their private property as opposed to in the public right of way.
All right.
Does that mean there's room for two cars or just one for two cars?
Yes. All right, is a motion on the table? Great. Second? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This brings us to item 14. I know we have the report in our binder. This, this next item on the agenda is item 14 from Information Services, which introduces an ordinance limiting section 2.00.020 of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code to rename the Information Services Department the Technology Services Department and adds additional sections to make related changes and waives the reading of the ordinance in its entirety.
Move adoption.
Is there a second? Is there?
I'll second it.
All right, can we take public comment?
Sure, Mr. President.
This is great.
Can we take, should we take public comment?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so we'll go to Zoom at this time. And I have one hand raised for Remy Tan. Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hi, I'm just Remy Tan, architect, resident of Pacifica. I'm just concerned that, you know, these naming changes are going to cause, you know, needed money being spent changing cards, signs and other handouts and that sort of thing. You know, my kid's high school went through one of these name changes and branding exercise cost them a ton of money. I heard the federal government is spending $400 million on the change from the Defense Department to the War Department. Actually, I heard it's in the billions. So I think the county, given the, you know, all of the issues with the finances, should kind of refrain on making this sort of change. There's a difference between information technology and technology, you know, six and a half, one dozen. So save the money and, you know, keep the streets and the infrastructure, you know, maintained. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Wentworth. Can I get a motion on this item?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes, and you're probably the first person ever to get something passed without having to say much.
Except this is great.
You did, you did a wonderful staff report, though. It was very comprehensive, so thank you.
Thank you. I hope you got a chance to see the, the new logo. We're pretty proud of it. It was done by staff in-house.
Yeah, we saw it on the, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Supervisor.
We did. I'm sorry.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you so much. We'll now move to item 15, which is a Measure K item, authorizing Measure K funds not to exceed $20,000 to the Pacifica Historical Society for the restoration of the historic rail car. This comes from Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you Supervisor Canepa. So the Ocean Shore Rail, rail service was, is an integral part of the coast side history. It actually opened up Pacifica in areas of development in the early 20th century. The Pacifica Historical Society is a small organization that runs a small museum on the coast. They were able to obtain one of the old rail cars and they have been in the process of trying to restore it. It's a very difficult time to actually restore it. They actually, they want to use it in educational programs throughout the coast. As you know, on the bayside, people, students have access to travel to the Redwood City Museum and it seems like the coast side should have some resources to do the same. It's a modest grant of $20,000 to actually restore that for those educational programs. All right, so I think I'll leave it at that to begin with and see if you all have any questions.
Any questions? I don't see any. Is there a, is there a public comment?
Yes, Mr. President. Emailed comments were sent to the board and also put on the website and we have comments from Zoom. So we'll go to Sue Beckmeyer, followed by Remy Tan. Sue, please unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, President Canepa and colleagues. The City Council of the City of Pacifica joins me in expressing our strongest support for the Pacifica Historical Society's funding request for the restoration of the historic Ocean Shore Railroad passenger car. This rail car represents a unique and irreplaceable piece of Pacifica's and the county's cultural and transportation history. As one of the last remaining passenger cars from the original Ocean Shore Railroad still in existence, it serves as a tangible link to the early development of the San Mateo. For more than 15 years, the Pacifica Historical Society has demonstrated a sustained commitment to the preservation of this vintage asset through fundraising, volunteer work and complex historical restoration, and there is light at the end of the tunnel. Once fully restored, the rail car will be permanently located adjacent to the Pacifica Coastside Museum. Thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration of this important request.
Thank you. We'll now go to Remy Tan and I can make a final call for speakers at this time. So please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay, our last speakers will be Remy Tan followed by Sid Young. Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Remy Tan, again, architect and resident of Pacifica for 28 years here. As long as I've been living here, the Coastside Historical Society's been working on that rail car and they put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that, a lot of volunteer hours in it. And I was just checking with them, they need volunteers and they're at a point that need some really professional work to kind of finish off the project. So I'm glad this $20,000 grant that's being spearheaded by Supervisor Mueller is moving forward and I urge everybody to vote for it. It is an irreplaceable piece of Coastside history as Mayor Beckmeyer has said. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have our last speaker, Sid Young. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sheri. I hope they will fund this because it's not just a Pacifica project, it's really representative of the whole coast side history because, as you probably know, the Ocean Shore Railroad went from San Francisco all the way down to Half Moon Bay for bringing tourists down the coast side to sell them little vacant lots at Valamar and Moss Beach and El Granada. And they would get off the railroad and realtors would meet them at the different stops and show them parcels, even out in Seal Cove. So it was quite the tourist stop from San Francisco until Devil's Slide went out and then I think they had, what do you call it? They had a recession or something, but the Ocean Shore Railroad is quite the history of the coast side and is this being the remaining car, I'd love to see it restored. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public comment, Mr. President.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah, thank you. And I misstated, it's actually, I said I think that early 19th century, I think I meant to say the early 1900s. And it was the 1908 earthquake that actually ended up putting them out of business. But I think it's a beautiful project for the kids of Pacifica and the coast side and seniors and everyone else. And the other note I'd want to make, there have been some, the Pacifica Historical Society museum is free to the public, so it's just really a beautiful group of people. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Second.
Okay, second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Spear?
Aye, it's a regional asset.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so the last item on the regular agenda is item 16, which is a Measure K item authorizing funds not to exceed $15,000 to PVI for their program, providing specialized concierge assistance to family caregivers supporting older adults and fostering community connections throughout San Mateo County. I am sponsoring this item. I think it's extremely, extremely important. They'll basically provide essential services to family caregivers, older adults, including those living with dementia throughout San Mateo County. At this time, I'd like Artemis to come up and just say a couple of words about what we're doing. If we could put her on a timer for one minute? Sorry, Artemis.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for waiting the whole meeting, you and Christine. Thank you.
Yes, and Christina here. Peninsula Volunteers is a nonprofit organization. We've been in San Mateo County serving seniors for the last almost 80 years. So Queessence is this new program that we recently launched to help family caregivers navigate the aging journeys so we can prevent the burnout that 75% of family caregivers are experiencing at the time. So, yeah.
Do you want to say anything, Christina?
Yeah.
Greetings, President Canepa and Board of Supervisors and County Executive Callagie. Good to see you and thank you for all your service. This has been a great meeting and informative. I just wrote up something to explain our services. I'm actually the one right now, I'm the manager of the Queessence program. I go out and meet with our clients as well as their families, our support teams. So this is just kind of a brief summary of what I do, but I could definitely share life stories, our real stories that I encounter. And I have a good one if you're interested, I'd love to share with you if you have time. I know it's been a long day, but you guys are doing such great work. Thank you.
It's been a long day, yes it has.
The Queessence program is a non-medical program that provides assistance to older adults that no longer could do everyday activities such as paying bills, coordinating services, scheduling appointments to live independently at home. I'd like to just interject with this one thing. Things that we do every day that we take for granted, like just check your text messages on your phone, are things that some of my clients cannot do. As well as provide respite to family caregivers serving as a liaison to provide weekly, sometimes daily, updates to them, along with providing support to them by working on tasks or responsibilities that they do not have the bandwidth to fulfill weekly. So some of the support teams, I'm referring to family members or their friends, most of them, like Artemis had mentioned, are very burned out because they're trying to take care of a loved one that no longer could take care of themselves. For instances, I work with family POAs, power of attorneys, that live out of the area and rely on the Queessence services to do a wellness check on their loved ones to make sure they're doing well.
Christine, if you can wrap up.
Sure. Weekly assessments and reports on what's needed in the home and their loved ones. Our hope at PVI is that you'll pass the Measure K funding so we have the opportunity to serve older adults and their support teams that cannot afford to pay for the weekly private fee for services. This will allow us to assist a segment of our population that needs support but cannot afford it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you say your name for the record?
Yes. Supervisor Mueller?
I just wanted to thank you both for the work that you do. I've gone, I mean, I'm sure you all have gone.
Christina Demas Khan.
Oh, thank you.
So the work that you do at PVI is so incredibly essential. For years, I've gone with you all on your trips to deliver foods to people. You make it so that people can age in place in this county, in their homes when they have no other options or anywhere else to go. You also provide a wonderful place for people to come and enjoy community again together. Colleagues, I was at the Oktoberfest celebration last week. It was an awesome party. Coolest band, people having a great time, and the amount of engagement you do to improve the health of seniors in the community, their mental interaction and just the feeling of community and love that surrounds them. It is an amazing organization. Supervisor Canepa, thank you for bringing this Measure K for them. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comments?
I don't have any speaker slips from chambers, so I'll just check on Zoom for public comment. We are on item number 16 now for Peninsula.
Hold on one sec, we have Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I also have, I only went one time, but it was very, very memorable, very special to be able to sit with the senior who was so welcoming and I can't remember the name of your director at the time who joined me on that visit.
Mr. Olson. Maybe Mr. Olson?
No.
Depends on which program.
Bart?
Oh, okay.
There was Bart.
No, it was a woman.
Stephanie.
Stephanie, probably Stephanie, that sounds familiar. Anyways, I would love to have some of my team join at some point in the future as well. Thank you.
Give me the public comment?
Yes, we do have one hand raised for Remy Tan. Remy, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Remy Tan, Pacifica. I urge all of the supervisors to vote for this measure. It's really important. I know my late father, if there was a program like this, he would have been able to age in place in the house he lived in for over 30 years down in Santa Clara County. And when they moved to senior housing, I clearly could see he wasn't as happy, he was less mobile, he was doing less things, he wasn't gardening anymore like he used to do. And, yeah, he passed away less than a year after moving to senior housing. And, you know, and he was one of the lucky ones because he couldn't afford senior housing. A lot of people can't afford senior housing. Remember that, that was like over $8,000 a month for him and my mom to live in senior housing. And they were fortunate he could, but, you know, that's prohibitively expensive for all but the, you know, upper, upper middle class. So this is a really important service to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Mueller, we're bringing them to North County. And I'm really excited about that. I'm enthusiastic. And so with that, I'll make a motion to adopt this item.
Second.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Artemis, thank you very much. Christina Demas Khan, you used to serve with us on our Aging Commission, is that correct?
13 years.
13 years.
I got an extra year in there during COVID.
All right.
And I've also spoken at Jackie Spear's Seniors on the Move, I remember when he introduced me. So it's good to see you.
Thank you guys for your incredible work. We're now at the end of the regular agenda, County Attorney, before we go into closed session.
Will there be any report out?[1784.83]